Hello. Good evening. So it's six o'clock, so I'll call this meeting to order. It's nice to see a full room. So if we could have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hagley.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Vice Mayor Herrod.
Here.
Mayor Mitchell.
Here. If you could join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic first and one nation under God in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Someone move to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Am I? Opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. Report on closed session. We did not have a closed session, so there's nothing to report. Announcements and presentations. We have some recognition of city employees with milestone anniversaries. Who wants to start us? Director Zimmer?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Very happy to be here for a couple of milestone anniversaries. The first one is Patrick Foose, whom you all know for standing up in Terry's absence and doing a great job managing something that he doesn't have much experience with, which is really telling of his willingness to contribute and his abilities to take on just about anything. I've worked alongside Patrick for about eight years here. My first impression of Patrick was, wow, that dude's serious. I learned pretty quickly. It was just a ruse. It helps deliver his jokes. I have nothing but respect for Patrick, his abilities. He shows up, he gets to work as soon as he's here. He produces a lot. He has delivered so many capital projects for the city, different sizes, different types over the years, including the most recent recycled water project. He brings in a fair amount of grant funding, which we all really appreciate. And while doing all of that, he still plays a major part in keeping the water and wastewater treatment plants running. We all rely on him in many ways. I've been Patrick's supervisor for, I think, two weeks now, and my training is going very well, or at least I think so. Patrick, if you want to come up. It has been an absolute pleasure working with you, and the city is lucky to have you.
Thank you, Larry. I had to chuckle a little bit when Larry was patting me on the back a little bit about stepping into the utility director's position, and I kept thinking while I was sitting in the chair that I can no longer be blissful nor ignorant about this stuff. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you so much for this recognition. I'm truly honored to have been here for 10 years. It's hard to believe that it's been that long, but we have accomplished a lot in that amount of time. We've achieved compliance with the seasonal discharge prohibition at the recycled, or the water reclamation facility. We've developed beneficial reuse program for the recycled water that the city generates. We've updated some key facilities. I like to call it clawed our way into the 21st century. And we've launched some computerized maintenance management systems enhancing the reliability and credibility of the water and wastewater utilities. It's been my honor and privilege to have been a part of the water and wastewater utilities teams and, for a short time, the electric utility team. It's great to be surrounded by folks who care about the work that they do and the impact that they have on the community of Hillsburg. During the time that I've been here, we've weathered fires and floods and pandemics, and I get reminded from time to time, those were not very common before I started working here. I'm excited about the challenges that the future holds, and I look forward to contributing to address these challenges into the future. As for now, I thank you for the opportunity to have reached this milestone. Thank you.
So from 10 years to 15 years, Jared Durico, our utility maintenance superintendent, has been with us for quite a long time. There are few people, if any, that I lean on as heavily as I do Jared. His knowledge of city infrastructure, his personal relationships with city staff, local contractors, local businesses, and the residents is just incredible and beyond valuable for me. He's always willing to and able to address emergencies, big and small, as they occur. Being a Hillsburg resident, he's often the first person to respond, and there's no one I'd rather have on the scene. During major emergencies, our floods and fires, I've had to argue with him to go home and rest because he's here for the residents. He's here to serve the community, and he does it with a kindness and understanding that's really impressive. He provides excellent customer service, as does all of his team because of him. So Jared, and actually, the real hero, his wife is here, Nikki, along with his kids Stella and Luca. Do you want to come up, Jared? To commemorate your 15 years, we bought you a box of golf balls. It was recommended that they put my face on it, but I, someone said he would probably drive farther if they did, but I vetoed that. So instead, it's City of Hillsburg, 15 years, Jared Durico. So they got a box of them on my desk.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know what I'd do without you.
You? I didn't plan to sing on. I didn't plan a speech, and after listening to Patrick's speech, I'm glad I didn't because I cannot follow that up. It's been a pleasure working for the city for the last 15 years. The biggest thing is my hair is white now versus the lighter color it was before. The city's been great. It's given me challenge after challenge after challenge, which is something that I love. I love challenge. I've never had a job that I've wanted to stay at for as long as I've been here. I've been in and out of construction and so on and so forth, but the city of Hillsburg's been a great place, and the people here are great to work with, and they're the ones who make everything that's possible for me. So, thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Sure. Mayor, if you'll indulge me for just a sec, I just want to echo and add to a couple of things that Larry said about both of these employees. First, for Patrick, obviously, in his critical work on water and wastewater over the years, there are a few things that we do that are as fundamental, that would be as missed, missed as much if they went wrong. I don't even like to think about what that would look like, and we're really lucky to have people who can help us run those systems as reliably at such a high quality. You also heard something Patrick's done that I've seen over and over again is understand what our big projects are and go find that money, and that is really hard. And so we've completed projects in recent years, lots of them, that Patrick led. And in years to come, even after perhaps Patrick has gone on to do something else, we'll still be reaping the benefits of projects that are in the pipeline and are moving forward because he had the forethought and the ability to go out and be creative and aggressive in helping us make things happen. So that legacy will be really important. And I do, I think I said this when we introduced our new electric director at the last meeting, but I don't think Patrick was here to hear it, so I just want to publicly thank him. You heard before he was asked, I don't even know, but you know how many months ago it was, I've lost count, but many months ago, to step in and, while doing all of that other stuff, six months, that's fair, run an electric utility, no small task. And we used to joke, let's just make sure the lights stay on, but it's much, much more complicated than that, and he did an amazing job. So I just want to publicly thank him for that work. And also want to thank Jared. He's somebody, in my job, I receive, much like the council, I think, a lot of concerns and questions from members of the community about things that are happening out there, large and small, and I tend to funnel those to the department directors. And I learned really quick that a very high percentage of the tricky questions that come through my box end up going to Jared because he's somebody who knows where everything is in this town, how everything works in this town, and he and the crews that he leads make it happen. They're the people who really do the work. That serves our community. And Larry spoke a little bit about emergencies. Fortunately, in my time, most of my experience has been on drills rather than the real things that happened before that, but I've seen it in the drills. An organization really relies on somebody who knows how everything works, who knows where everything is in this community, and has that dedication to just lean in and make things happen. So I've seen in those instances, you notice who's around and who's on the team that's going to make sure everything goes smoothly because of their expertise and their knowledge, and he's one of those people. So hopefully, no emergencies anytime soon, but if we have them, I know who I'm going to be counting on, and Jared's going to be an important part of that. So to both of, both Patrick and Jared, 10 years, 15 years are really great milestones, and we're lucky to have both of you. So, thank you.
So we'd like to have you come up and get a picture with us. We'll start with Patrick, and then Jared, you and your family. We'd love to, if you'd come up. Thank you. That's always the fun part of these meetings. After this, it kind of goes downhill a little bit, but we'll just have to acknowledge that. And nothing intentional to the city manager. City manager reports are up next.
No offense taken. I'll be very brief. I know you have a long agenda tonight. Just a couple of updates. One is, I wanted to do a recap. At our last meeting, we noted that we were going to do on very short notice a pretty significant prescribed burn up at the Hillsburg Ridge open space, so I just wanted to report back that I'm pleased that that went very well. The council will recall that we had a really fortuitous break in the weather where we'd had some rain to get moistures up, had a dry spell, and then more rain coming. So it was an opportunity we wanted to grab, even though we didn't have a chance to plan this one for months and months out. And I think that has proved to be a good decision by our fire department and their partners at Cal Fire. So just wanted to share it went well. And also, I think we get a little bit better on community outreach on these types of activities each time we do it. And we talked about this a little bit at the meeting two weeks ago, that we did send out a NICSOL alert and did a couple of things different and more aggressively in terms of outreach. And I think what I heard at the end of that day is that we'd received one call to dispatch asking what was going on. I don't remember what the number was before, at the last time we did this, but it was high. So I think that's a testament to our fire department and really everybody who was involved in communications. So we can always get better, but I think we did get better in this case. So I wanted to share that good news. Beyond that, just really quickly, I wanted to do a reminder that we have, I can't believe it, but it's dark out there and it's November, holiday events are coming up. So December 5th is Mary Hillsburg, which is not that far away, just barely a month away. And we are targeting, here's a fun date that I'll leave you with. Weather permitting, it does have to come down from Oregon, and last year there was snow involved, and it got a little delayed. But weather permitting, November 13th, our tree is getting delivered. So that's actually a bit of an operation. We close part of Hillsburg Avenue in the morning and have a crane drop the thing into place. So assuming that date holds, we'll get more information out to people who might be worried about the traffic impacts, but it's also a real fun milestone, which is that we're a week and a half away, and the tree will be in place. So I'll leave you with that. Happy to take any questions.
Questions? No? Thank you for that report. So we'll move on to public comments on items on the consent calendar and non-agenda items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters of general interest, not on the agenda, but related to city council business. Pursuant to the Brown Act, however, the city council cannot consider any issues or take any action on request during this comment period. Do we have anybody who would like to make public comment at this time? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Holly Hoods, the executive director and curator of the Hillsburg Museum, and I'm here to talk about recognizing Smith-Robinson Community Spirit Day on November 8th. This is basically a new day that we're proposing at the museum. Because the museum is the steward of Hillsburg's storied history of community volunteerism and generosity, Smith-Robinson stands out in Hillsburg history as a timeless beacon of community spirit and caring. Smith-Robinson lived from 1907 to 1963, and he was a community leader, goodwill ambassador, hospital administrator, choir director, and coach. During World War II, he contributed to the war effort by raising amazing morale, writing personal letters, and sending a hometown newsletter to every Hillsburg service person. During the Korean conflict, he headed the Hillsburg's Adopted Battalion Committee, which meant that Hillsburg became the adoptive hometown for a 1,000-member military battalion in the Army during the Korean conflict. Virtually every service club, school group, church group, everyone in town joined together to try to do this very important morale-building activity. And now more than ever, we feel like that's something that we want to bring back. So November 8th was Smithy's birthday, and so we're proposing that we individually and group do something to, something to generate kindness, something for the community. You don't have to do a big thing, but do something small and caring. And we'd like to try to build this every year as a way to remember his legacy, to honor his community spirit. In November of 1960, the Hillsburg City Council recognized Smith for all of his activities and declared him the Hillsburg Goodwill Ambassador. So all these years later, we would like to resurrect that spirit of goodwill and inspire the community to act. And I will be back next city council meeting, hoping to get a proclamation from the city to support this effort. But in the meantime, I hope you will go out and celebrate November 8th with love and care in your hearts for the community, keeping Smith-Robinson in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Just to piggyback on Holly's thoughts, Robert Noos and Heidi Marina moved out of Smith-Robinson's house and sold it a few years ago, and the people that came in, there was no, it did not have a historic designation, but it looks to me like they've done a decent job of holding onto the facade. And I've thought several times, one I've driven by on Grant Street, that they might be open to having a plaque in front that says, "This is the historic house of Smith Robinson." So that might be something to consider on November 8th when we're being kind and loving and thoughtful. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone come forward. We'll bring this back. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. So moved.
Becken.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley.
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herrod.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So now we'll move on to item seven, we have public hearings, 7A. We have an ordinance to basically update the California Building Code. Building Official David Willoughby to present.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and city council members. Thank you. My name is David Willoughby. I'm the building official for the city. And tonight, I'm presenting an ordinance for the adoption of the 2025 California Building Standards Code and the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code with our local amendments. Next slide, please. The recommended action is to waive, waive the full reading of the text and introduce by title only an ordinance amending chapter 15.04 of the Hillsburg Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code Title 24, which includes parts 1, 2, 2.5, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, and coordinating code sections from the previously adopted local amendments to the 2022 California Building Standards Code Title 24 and the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code. Next slide, please. Assembly Bill 130 was signed by the governor and went into effect June 30th of 2025, and this limits local amendments affecting residential projects to only those filed with the California Building Standards Commission and in effect by September 30th, 2025. So back in August 25th, the city adopted the 2022 California Building Standards, Building Standards Code amended with some corrections and clarifications of our local amendments to meet the timeline set by Assembly Bill 130. Next slide, please. So the purpose for the ordinance is to formally adopt the 2025 California Building Standards Code and local amendments, which provide adequate protection to our community. Typically, this is a three-year adoption process. The state goes through and they create, they go through, and every three years, the codes are updated, and that process results in local jurisdictions adopting that code every three years. So Assembly Bill 130 stops that for residential, residential codes, and it extends it to 32, I believe. So maybe it's 31. So basically, this will be for residential construction. This will be the last code adopted for the next six years. I don't know if California will come out with another code for 2028, but if it does, the residential codes will be the same. There won't be any changes to that based on Assembly Bill 130. Next slide, please. So there are three proposed changes in our local amendments, and these are just to coordinate code sections and code years for our local amendments. The first one is HMC, the municipal code section 15.04.020, the California Building Code. There's a reference to the 2022 California Fire Code, and that is replaced with the 2025 Fire Code. In municipal code section 15.04.030, the California Residential Code Amendment, the appendix AX is replaced with appendix CI. And in the municipal code section 15.04.070, California Existing Building Code Amendments, section 116 is replaced with section 115. So those are the changes in the local amendments proposed for this ordinance. Next slide, please. So the recommended action is to waive the full reading of the text and introduce by title only an ordinance amending chapter 15.04 of the Hillsburg Municipal Code and adopting by reference the 2025 California Building Standards Code Title 24, which includes parts 1, 2, 2.5, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code and coordinating code sections from the previously adopted local amendments to the 2022 California Building Standards Code Title 24 and the 2021 International Property Maintenance Code. Next slide, please. So that's a lot of numbers and code sections. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that. Does the council have questions? No? Okay. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there are public comment, anybody wish to make comment on this, please come forward. Not seeing anyone come forward. We'll bring it back to council, close the public hearing, and action. Do we need to read the entire thing into the record?
You do not, but we do need two actions from the council tonight. It looks like just technographically, the second one got sort of wedged into the first. And so your second action will be to set a public hearing on adoption of the ordinance. So if it would please the council, you could do two separate actions. One would be adopt staff recommendation, and that would be the portion of the staff recommendation that starts with, it's essentially the first reading of the ordinance, waive full reading of the text and introduce by title only an ordinance repealing, et cetera, et cetera. If someone wants to make that motion, I can then talk you through the second one.
So moved.
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley.
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herrod.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. And next?
And the second action would be to set a public hearing on adoption of the ordinance for November 17th, 2025, and publish notice of the public hearing in accordance with government codes. government code sections 500 to 2.3 and 6066.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Herrod?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Thank you. Yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, David.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. And so next, public hearing, 7B. We have an appeal of the Ruse Treatment LLC CUP 0003, 2025, conditions of approval. Senior Planner Ellen McDowell.
Madam Mayor, I live within 500 feet of 891 and 893 Grove Street, so I have a financial interest in this item. I will thus be recusing pursuant to FPPC Regulation 18704D2. I will be appearing as a member of the general public solely as to my real property, which is owned entirely by members of my immediate family and me. Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, Vice Mayor Herrod, and council members. My name is Ellen McDowell, and I'm with the Community Development Division. Tonight's item is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of conditional use permit for the Ruse Treatment LLC to operate a 13-bed residential care facility for substance abuse treatment at 891 and 893 Grove Street. Next slide, please. Before we get into those details, I'll briefly review tonight's hearing format. We'll begin with the staff presentation, followed by a 15-minute presentation from the appellant, and then a 15-minute presentation from the applicant. After that, the city council will have the opportunity to ask questions, followed by public comment. Once public comment is closed, both the appellant and the applicant will each have up to 10 minutes for a rebuttal. And finally, the council will deliberate and take action on the appeal. It is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution affirming the Planning Commission action approving the conditional use permit for a 13-bed substance abuse treatment facility at 891 and 893 Grove Street. Next slide, please. The property totals about three acres. On the west side of Grove Street, it's bordered by single-family homes to the north, south, east, and by 101 to the west. The site currently includes a lounge pavilion, a pool, bocce ball court, pickleball courts, and 45 parking spaces. Next slide, please. The project before you was approved by the Planning Commission on September 23rd of this year. The commission approved a conditional use permit allowing a substance abuse treatment facility that would accommodate 13 clients in existing rooms across four buildings. It would operate a non-12-step program, offering therapy, counseling, yoga, meditation, and other holistic practices. A medical director would be on-site approximately 20 hours a week. There would be approximately eight daytime staff, including counselors, a cook, and recovery specialists, and at least two staff on-site 24 hours a day. No new construction is proposed as part of this proposal, and the project is strictly a change in use from a bed and breakfast to a residential care facility. Next slide, please. The site is currently home to the Ruse Bed and Breakfast, and that includes 12 guest rooms, one manager unit, and associated amenities. On July 24th, 2025, the city received an application from the Ruse Treatment LLC to convert the existing bed and breakfast to a state-licensed residential treatment facility. The Planning Commission reviewed the application on September 23rd and voted 5-1 to approve the conditional use permit and found the project to be exempt from CEQA. An appeal was filed by a group of neighboring residents on October 3rd, 2025, requesting that the council add several additional conditions of approval to the permit. Next slide, please. So the substance abuse treatment facility before you this evening is considered a residential care facility. This use is considered a protected class, and this means that people recovering from a substance abuse disorder are protected under the Fair Employment and Housing Act, or FEHA, as well as the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA. These facilities must be treated the same as other residential care uses, like assisted living or nursing facilities. The local zoning allows for facilities with seven or more residents with an approved conditional use permit. Conditions must provide reasonable accommodation and avoid discrimination. Next slide, please. The project must be licensed by the Department of Healthcare Services, or DHCS, as required under state law and condition of approval number five, approved by the Planning Commission. To obtain that license, the operator must go through a rigorous application process that includes fire clearance, a detailed program, operations, staffing plan, resident policies and procedures, as well as floor plans, menus, and resident agreements, just to name a few. Once licensed, the facility is subject to ongoing DHCS inspections, and the license must be posted on-site. Failure to comply with these state regulations can result in penalties or revocation of the license. So there's a strong state-level oversight mechanism in place for this use. Next slide, please. The Planning Commission made the required findings under the Land Use Code, specifically that the use is consistent with the general plan and zoning, and the use will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, and the use complies with all applicable provisions of the code. Next slide, please. On October 3rd, 2025, neighboring residents filed an appeal to the city council. The appellants are not appealing the approved use. Instead, they're requesting that the city add additional conditions of approval to the approved conditional use permit. On October 15th, 2025, the appellants and the applicant met. This was without city staff, and they discussed and requested, requested conditions of approval in an effort to reach an agreement between the two parties. On October 15th, 2025, the applicant submitted an email to city staff summarizing their impression of the meeting and detailing certain additional conditions of approval that the applicant would not be opposed to. And on October 20th, 2025, the appellant submitted a memo summarizing their impression of the meeting and updated their requested conditions of approval. Staff evaluated each of the appellant's proposed conditions for legal compliance with the Fair Employment and Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. We reviewed for compliance whether there was substantial evidence that supported the related project impact and whether the condition would be practical and enforceable. You have several attachments this evening for you, including a revised proposed conditions memo from October 20th. Another memo from the appellant revising the conditions of approval was received further another one this morning at 11:00 a.m., and this one should be on the dais for you this evening for your review. It does appear that the appellants have removed six of the originally requested conditions of approval. In an effort to be consistent with the original appeal points, I will review those, I will review all 13 with you this evening that were originally submitted, and just briefly highlight those that have been removed. Next slide, please. Okay. So let's go through the appellant requested conditions of approval. I'll try and walk you through all 13 that the appellant requested as part of the original appeal and walk you through staff's conclusions for each. First, the appellant's request that the facility post or distribute a written code of conduct and list of client rights. This requirement is already covered under state licensing through the Department of Healthcare Services. Licensed facilities must post client rights and maintain written rules for residents as a condition of their license. Because the city does not require this for other residential care uses, and because the city has no practical means of enforcement, adding it here would create a regulatory burden and potentially conflict with the Fair Employment and Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act protections. This conclusion, or this condition was not included on the memo received from the appellant's this morning. It has been removed. Next slide, please. The appellants propose limiting meal service to three set mealtimes per day. Meal schedules and menus are regulated through the DHCS license and not land use permits. There's no evidence that the meal preparation or kitchen use has caused any land use impacts, such as odor or noise, that would justify this restriction. It could also intrude on resident privacy and is not enforceable by the city. Next slide, please. The appellants ask that the facility investigate and install additional baffling or ventilation for the pavilion kitchen to reduce odors and noise. There's no substantial evidence of existing or potential odor or noise impacts. The city doesn't have a noise, sorry, an odor ordinance outside of the cannabis context, and the project already complies with the noise ordinance. The Planning Commission previously added condition of approval number nine, requiring that the applicant investigate odor reduction measures, which should sufficiently address this issue. Next slide, please. The appellants request that the applicant prepare a good neighbor policy, including a 24-hour contact number and delivery of that policy to the neighbors. This type of condition is not imposed on other residential care uses, such as assisted living or nursing homes here in Healdsburg. Noise, loitering, and trash are already covered under the city code enforcement provisions as well. The city also maintains emergency contact information for all businesses through our business licensing system. So creating a separate policy here would, could potentially single out a protected use and would not be enforceable by the city. Next slide, please. The appellants requested additional screening or taller fencing along the property line shared with 851 Grove Street. For this, there's no nexus between the project and any documented privacy impact. The rear yard is distant from the neighboring home, and no construction or changes in activity are proposed. The privacy between the existing residential properties is typically handled privately between neighbors and not as a land use condition. Additionally, this was not included in the most recent memo that was received this morning. It has been removed. The appellants here propose a blanket prohibition on renting the property for any purpose. This is already addressed through planning condition of approval number six, which limits onsite events to no more than 30 attendees and prohibits amplified sound. A complete prohibition would go beyond what is required of any other residential care facility and is not supported by evidence of an impact. It would also be difficult to enforce and potentially discriminatory under the Fair Employment and Housing Act and Americans with Disabilities Act. Next slide, please. Appellants propose that only staff and clients may use the pickleball courts and only on a pickup game basis. There's no evidence that occasional recreational use of the courts would cause a land use impact. Their residential care facilities are not required to restrict who may use any onsite amenities, and their proposed restriction could also raise privacy concerns and would be infeasible for the city to enforce. Next slide, please. The appellants propose no amplified music on the site at any time. Noise levels are already regulated under the city's noise ordinance, which sets quantitative standards. Additionally, prohibiting specific music genres could discriminate based on content. And the Planning Commission approval, condition of approval number seven already ensures compliance with the city's noise ordinance addressed in Healdsburg Municipal Code, Chapter 9.32. Next slide, please. The next three slides that I'll go over, these conditions were included on the original appeal, but were not included in the memo that was received this morning. I'll quickly touch on those, and the appellants proposed, the first one is the appellants proposed prohibiting clients from driving or parking on-site. For staff's analysis, no traffic or parking impacts were identified in the record, and the site provides ample parking on-site. There's 45 parking spaces, far more than are required for the proposed use. Residents of other licensed care facilities are not prohibited from driving if licensed to do so, and this would single out individuals in recovery and could conflict with disability rights laws. Next slide, please. The appellants proposed restricting client movement, allowing off-site trips only with staff accompaniment. This proposal raises legal and constitutional issues regarding the freedom of movement. Clients in licensed facilities are allowed to freely move about. Their mobility is governed by facility policy and the Department of Healthcare Services regulations. This is not a local zoning condition. The city does not impose similar restrictions on other residential care or group living Next slide. The appellants requested that the gates be kept closed except for trash pickup or emergencies with intercom required for access. There's no evidence that open gates cause a public nuisance or a safety problem. The city does not require closed entry gates for any other residential uses, and requiring this could again discriminate against a protected class that would be impractical for the city to monitor. And those last three were not included, and they were removed from the memo this morning. Next slide, please. This one is still included in the request, and the appellants request new signage identifying the facility name and address at the entrance. This has already been addressed through standard permitting. Any new signage requires a sign permit from our building department, and the fire department requires visible address numbers. So this is something that would be taken care of with the fire department inspection that's required through the Department of Healthcare Services. So staff does not see a need to add this condition of approval. Next slide, please. Lastly, this was also removed from the appellants' request, but to briefly touch on this one, the appellants requested incorporation of agency comments from fire and police. Those comments that were included were informational and routine, and they apply to all businesses, not just this project. The property already complies with the California Fire Code and Building Code from prior inspections, and the Department of Healthcare Services licensing process includes a mandatory fire inspection prior to operation, and the city business license process requires an emergency contact phone number for use by staff, including police. Next slide, please. Based on the record that went before the Planning Commission and is in front of the council this evening, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution affirming the Planning Commission's approval of CUP 2025-02, the Ruse Treatment LLC, and approving the conditional use permit for a 13-bed substance abuse treatment facility at 891 and 893 Grove Street. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation this evening, and we have Leila from our city attorney's office on as well, and we're both here to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. I appreciate that. Does the council have questions for the staff? Ron, you want to go first?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on that. Is there any city ordinance that regulates AA meetings as far as any requirements?
We do not.
Okay. And then I noticed that when you listed the state license requirements, you had four bullet points. When reviewing it, it looked like there were a total of 21 tabs that are required that are quite detailed. It looked to me like that state application covered most of the questions that we are being asked to consider.
It does.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Questions? Chris? No. Councilmember Hengly?
Just kind of taking notes where you're talking, so I don't know if you already covered it, but on the conditions of approval, the number four, this conditional use permit shall be suspended automatically upon violation of any applicable provision of the Hillsburg Municipal Code. So it, I'm assuming there's got to be more than just like an automatic because there's a complaint. Can you kind of talk about that process?
Yeah, so that condition of approval was actually amended. The language was changed from shall to may. So the conditional use permit may be suspended or revoked upon violation of any applicable provision of the Hillsburg Municipal Code. So we have time to investigate the issue and see what it is, and we can go from there. If there is a violation, it will come back to the city council for consideration for revocation. Oh, Planning Commission, sorry.
Okay, so if it would go to the Planning Commission, then whatever happened, then there's also the right to appeal, and so basically there's due process.
Yes, there is.
Okay, so if there are no further questions from council at this moment, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the appellant to make their presentation. And I just want to point out that we do have a timer up here that will time for the 15 minutes for your presentation, so if you could watch for that.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Ariel Kelly, and I'm speaking on my personal behalf, obviously, tonight, not as a member of any body representing the city. I am one of the appellant's along with, next slide. Next slide, please. Along with Dennis, no, please go back. Thank you. We'll get there. Dennis and Alice Oliver, Rick and Leslie Oberdorfer, Patrice Venazziano, myself, Maya Elmer, and James and Catherine Lance are all appellant's who are seeking the additional conditions on this project. Next slide. As you can see in the center, the subject property, formerly known as the Honor Mansion Bed and Breakfast, now known as The Ruse, is surrounded on all sides by a number of residential uses. This neighborhood previously was a mixed-use district, and over the course of the last several years since it was annexed into the city limits, has gone through a number of major changes, and the character of the area has significantly skewed towards more residential use. Next slide. You can also see that this is the farm stand subdivision. You can see the blue squares there, and The Ruse is in the left-hand side here as we're facing west, that all of this area, previously known as a farm stand, is now a subdivision with many new homes on it. All that to be said, that this area has certainly gone through a number of changes, and as you'll hear tonight, the appellant's are not appealing the decision of the city to make this a residential care facility for those suffering from addiction. In fact, none of the neighbors have said that we don't believe that this is an appropriate use, especially given the residential character of the neighborhood. Now that said, this facility is by right to allow for six residential patients, and they are seeking to have 13, which means that the city has the ability to put conditions of approval on the project to make it compatible and make the land use compatible with the neighborhood, and that is what we are here seeking tonight. I'd like to turn it over to my neighbor, Alice Oliver, who is going to talk about her specific concerns as it impacts her property. Next slide.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for letting us speak tonight. Appreciate it. We purchased our home next door to The Ruse in 2016 and greatly valued living next to Honor Mansion, as it was Honor Mansion when we purchased. It was a quiet, respectful, considerate neighbors. Since the property's transition to The Ruse, we have noticed significant changes in the environment and overall character of the area. As we will continue to be neighbors, we hope to work collaboratively with you to address several concerns regarding your new plans. The proposal to convert the property into a rehab center will have substantial lasting impact on our daily lives. We have already endured numerous disruptions during the renovation phase, which have affected our comfort and quality of life, but recognize that's what happens during construction. One of our big concerns, living right next door, is the existing driveway that runs along our property directly beside our kitchen door and deck. During the dry months, passing garbage trucks and vehicles create a dense curtain of dust and dirt that blows into our yard and home, forcing us to retreat at times indoors to avoid being covered in dirt. Our outdoor furniture is also frequently covered in dirt, requiring cleaning and maintenance. Seems minor, but when this is happening on a sometimes daily basis during the summer months, it is problematic for us. With the anticipated increase in activity, the traffic along the driveway will rise considerably as the center's operation will function much like a restaurant serving three meals a day. This will bring more frequent deliveries, garbage collection, and service vehicles, further amplifying those noise and thus concerns. We propose that the driveway be paved with asphalt, which would provide a more permanent and effective solution, rather than reapplying the chip seal every few years. We're also concerned about the proposed smoking area near the Koi Pond. Its proximity to our property raises issues related to smoke drift, noise, and frequent gatherings throughout the day. The resulting conversations and activity would be easily heard from our home and outdoor spaces, further disrupting our peace and privacy. We respectfully propose the smoking area be relocated to the back of the property. Given the property's size, we believe there are suitable alternatives that would meet their needs while minimizing the impact on neighboring residents. Additionally, with more intensive food prep on site, we are concerned about the resulting odors, as we can already smell breakfast when the breeze is blowing our direction. Increased meal service will likely amplify this issue for neighboring properties. We would appreciate knowing what measures can be implemented, such as advanced kitchen exhaust filtration, I'm not sure what else, just to minimize those cooking odors escaping from this facility and impacting those nearby. Keith, Patrick, and Jonathan, we ask that these concerns be carefully considered as you move forward through thoughtful adjustments and open communication. We believe a mutually beneficial solution can be reached that supports both your project's success and the well-being of those nearby.
My name is Rick Oberdorfer. I live at 14850 Grove Street, which is directly east of The Ruse. The Honor Mansion or the property that's there has obviously gone through many changes during the last 38 years since we moved in. We've lived in the city of Hillsburg 25 years, and that's when we were annexed and, I don't want to say forced, to become citizens of Hillsburg, but in the long run, it's probably worked out for the best. We are not on a sewer, we are not underwater, so none of those utilities actually have benefited us. But during that time, we've raised our children. I was on the Airport Commission for a while before they disorganized or reorganized that and included some sidewalks and whatnot. But I've also been very fortunate to be involved in lots of construction projects in Hillsburg. And the first project, actually, as, you know, an employee of BDM Construction, was the construction of this city hall. I was very proud of that. I think we did a pretty good job. I think the architects and everything. I think, and it stands to time, you know, even with the next addition that was put on, I think that this is a very proud accomplishment in my resume. But in addition to that, I was involved with the Alliance Medical Center, Hotel Hillsburg, H2 Harmonian Guest House, and some other minor projects around town. Currently, I'm the Director of Construction for Habitat for Humanity of Sonoma County, and we are entering into a partnership with the city of Hillsburg for construction of 10 homes out in Sagio Hills. So we do have a lot invested in this town, and I don't really see us ever leaving. Living on Grove Street has had its challenges over the years. We are, in order to get the sewer up to the northern properties, they had to run up Grove Street in order to utilize some funding, and in order to do that, we had a 28-foot hole in front of our house that tied up traffic and whatnot for a good three or four months. But I think the most challenging of all of the projects has been the renovation of the Honor Mansion and The Ruse. I was sitting at my desk, it was COVID, I look out the window, all of a sudden, there's all these steel beams and everything that are being installed where the pavilion is. And I'm, I questioned the contractor, who I knew, and he told me that they really weren't doing anything, they were just replacing what was existing. And as a consequence, none of the improvements or whatnot that were put into that were ever addressed, I don't think, by the building department. Also, I feel like they were able, and that as a consequence, I think, as you all know, they tried to turn it into a swim club and a bar, which we are still involved with a lawsuit, not a lawsuit, but an appeal of a liquor license that they're still trying to, still trying to obtain. Anyway, not to digress, we still think that things, we should be able to have the right to get some additional items put on the conditional use permit, mainly the, I'm sorry, the exhaust system that comes off the hood. That runs, some days it's off at night, but I can tell you, at 4:00 in the morning when I go out to get the newspaper, it's running, and I can hear it across the street. The other day, I was over at the Kelly's, and I came out their side door, I could not believe how loud it is. I cannot believe that no, and when we brought this up, we did have a meeting with the new tenant, and when I brought that up, he said that he stood on, you know, right in that courtyard, and he couldn't hear it. It was like the freeway noise, and I don't think that's true. I don't understand, I always thought, because it's always been like that since they turned it into the bed and breakfast, that they would do something to mitigate that noise just from the consequence of the rooms on the second floor would be uninhabitable, but evidently not. So I, we would like the city council to somehow make some recommendation that they address that. The other thing that we, that I'm concerned about is the meetings and having, you know, he told us, Keith told us when we met, that we were going to have opportunities to have other clubs and whatnot come out. If the site is locked down, where are these people going to park? So anyway, I better go so we have time.
So the neighbors are requesting that the commercial vent be enclosed with a noise baffling device. We've requested that on other city buildings, other restaurants, and other commercial facilities around town, and so that we don't believe that that would be an onerous condition that can also help mitigate odor, but especially the noise. Our neighbors, Rick and Leslie, who live across the street, as he mentioned, he can hear it from across Grove Street. I certainly can hear it inside my home. Sometimes it's as loud as like a helicopter landing on the building next door. We have no idea why it runs all night long, so we'd request that a timer be put on it so when they're not cooking and using the facility, that the fan gets turned off. Next slide. Prior to the development of the pavilion in 2021, the neighbors asked if they could tear out all of the landscaping along our property line. As you can see, there was a number of screening plants and trees that prevented the privacy between our residences. They said they would be tearing them out and then replanting them at their expense to be able to continue to have that privacy in our backyard. Next slide. This is what it looks like today. So not only is there no privacy screening, but they elevated the pavilion. So that is actually a six-foot tall fence on my side, but if you're on the opposite Ruse side of the fence, the entire building structure is lifted onto a concrete pad, I think it's three or three and a half feet above the ground. So their entire site, if you're standing at the pavilion and you walk up to the fence, even a short person like myself, that fence actually hits at your chest level. So there's a number of people who congregate right there. It's where folks come out and take a phone call when they're away from the restaurant building, and they just stand there staring over, kind of peering over the fence, watching my kids jump on the trampoline that's right there, or watching me garden, which is a very uncomfortable thing. I would prefer that if we are going to have a restaurant next door to our house, that they fulfill their commitment to putting the screening back in. I met with Keith, the applicant. He promised that they would raise the fence, but he has yet to, we shook hands on it, but has yet to put it in writing. And the applicants previously, when they were building the pavilion, said that they would put in some screening there as well, but ultimately chose not to. So, next slide. So it is not one of the conditions that we're requesting, but it is something that would personally be beneficial. You can see on the left is the current condition of the gate, where the majority of people park. To the right there, that's Alice's house, sorry, photo on the left. And then as you see the photo on the right, The Ruse, where I circled and read, that's where the address is, and it's the only place where 891 is listed from the street. And the applicants are going to be changing the name. Keith told us they will not be calling it The Ruse Treatment, but a new name, but they are not interested in putting up a sign to keep it discreet. We have people pulling into our driveway every single week, every single weekend, looking for The Ruse to check in. I have people who have come into my kitchen thinking that it is their bed and breakfast, and we would like them to post the address and post the name of their business so that people know where to go when they're arriving for their rehab. Thank you.
Thank you. So now, the council has, can have questions from the appellant and their responses. Does council have questions? No? No? Chris? Okay, no questions. So now, we will turn to the, invite the members of the public to comment. And the appellant and applicant teams may only speak. Wait a minute, when does the?
The applicant.
The applicant first, right? Okay, so the applicant can come up now and make their presentation, please. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name's Keith Greenberg. I'm a new, my wife and I are new residents of Hillsburg, hope to be long-term residents of Hillsburg, and I'm the General Manager of The Ruse Treatment. And I want to thank the city for all the hard work, particularly the Planning Commission staff has done to review our application, and particularly understand how substance abuse is to be treated under the Fair Housing Act, as well as the American Disabilities Act. I can tell you, I've developed facilities in numerous other cities and towns, and frankly, there are very few neighbors that want treatment facilities in their backyard. And I appreciate everybody saying that they see the need that we're going to be fulfilling by putting a treatment facility in place. There aren't many particularly high-end facilities in Sonoma, or for that matter, Napa Counties. So we think there's a real important need here that we're going to be filling. I want to point out, we're going to be developing a very discreet facility, which I think more the neighbors should be seen as a good thing. It's currently a 12-bed bed and breakfast, so I would say, you know, most people have more than one person in a room. So in our case, we think we'll be lucky to average eight residents at any time. It'll be It'll be many less people, as well as certainly less cause. At our last meeting and future meetings, it seems when I make statements, I'm often misinterpreted. I've said in the past that we would not like to see our clients come with their own vehicles. That was interpreted, I think, at one time as that we will not allow anybody to come with their vehicle. That's not something we can do. So it was one of the conditions, even though we were willing to make as many concessions as are legally permissible, one of the conditions we couldn't agree to. The bottom line at this time is that in our last meeting here, there were some concerns that we hadn't taken the time to meet with neighbors and explain what our program was going to be all about. I personally invited the appellant neighbors to breakfast. I said I would meet at any time. We spent a fair amount of time going over their concerns. I followed that up with a walk around Ms. Kelly's property, which, in both cases, I said I'm new to this situation. I'm not the person or the entity that has been doing the construction or the recent construction that I think was spoken about a couple of times by the appellants. We aren't doing any construction, so there won't be any new interruption going on. I think, again, there'll be much less traffic and interruption. The bottom line, again, is that we have been willing to make reasonable concessions or conditions if they're legally permissible. Apparently, they're not. I had explained that in our meet... In my meeting with the appellants, that although we could agree on certain other things, I wasn't sure the town could. So, anyway, we're hoping to move forward with our project, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Now, does the council have questions for the applicant? Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah. I wanted to find out, where are you in the 120-day application process? How far along are you in that?
Are you speaking about the state?
The state application, yes.
Well, it's not exactly a numerical timeframe, unfortunately. We think we're 60 days out from the time period when the state will come in for a visit, for a site inspection, and hopefully approval.
And you've provided the state with all 21 tabs of the detailed operations, your menu even?
Yes, we have. Brian Stutz, who's with me today, is actually our Executive Director, who is responsible for putting that application together.
Okay, and you are... It's a certified commercial kitchen, so you're following the guidelines required by the county as far as ventilation, fire suppression systems in the kitchen?
Yes.
Okay, and the chip seal. How do you determine the state of that? I know that it's difficult having gravel sometimes, having a large property, I had at that. How do you determine that? I know that I was concerned with my neighbors and controlled the amount of traffic because one of the things you like in a rural neighborhood is not to have that dust come up. So what is your determination of that quality?
Well, again, I'm brand-new to this property. You know, I haven't been residing there in any way, shape, or form as the owner or the operator. So I did go over recently with Patrick Wilhelm to take a look at the kitchen and the venting and the potential noise issue. And it was... While they were serving breakfast, when the fan was on, and honestly, and I have a tape of it somewhere, the only noise I heard was street noise, gardener's noise. I didn't hear almost anything from the fan. As far as the driveway, I've driven up and down it at pretty high speeds to see, you know, whether there was dust. Admittedly, we've had some rain recently, so I think even watering it down would make a difference in these... In the dry summer months. We... I've said that, you know, we're new to the situation. We want to be good neighbors, okay? And, you know, dust goes both ways, okay? It doesn't just go, you know, to the neighbor's property. It comes into our property. And I want to make our clients just as happy as our neighbors. So if there's an issue going forward with dust, there's a lot of ways to resolve it. You know, one way, a simple way, would be actually watering the driveway. You know, it may require additional sealant. We're not really in love with the whole asphalt concept, but, you know, it's something we're going to look at. You know, I didn't feel it was necessary to make a commitment at this time. But, you know, as far... Same thing with landscaping, okay? And for us, it goes... It goes both ways, okay? I don't really want my clients being exposed to neighbors' parties and events, and how many people are in their property, and what they're drinking or doing. You know, so I brought up to Ms. Kelly that, you know, we may look at expanding the fence line because I don't want our people being exposed to your property. Even though when I was on her side of the fence, there was only one area that she seemed to be concerned with, which I said, as a good neighbor, we would address. Not a big deal, okay? So I think, you know, we will be available. You know, we'll have people on site. Brian will be available. I live here. You know, we'll address concerns if they come up. But, you know, it's a highly regulated business where we have to do the right thing in a lot of different ways.
Yeah, I get the regulations. I looked at the actual application, and it's really detailed. I'm not a fan of may-do things. I know that when I had my rural property of 134 acres, I was concerned about my neighbors. I wanted to be a good neighbor. So when I had a number of guests come over, I looked into what I could do to keep the dust down outside of chip ceiling. And there are a number of binding agents that are biodegradable that I did on my own. There was not a hearing, there was not about that. I just wanted to be the best neighbor that I could so that I could avoid any situation or a phone call from a neighbor. So rather than things you might do, may do, require to do, it's being a good neighbor, to be ahead of problems. Because if you get ahead of some of these things, then the neighbors wouldn't be complaining. So that would be a better approach that I would like to see.
And I guess I neglected to say, I have already started to get ahead of some things because somebody brought up the signage, and I understand it probably already meets code, and it's not something that needs to be conditioned. But I already met with a sign company, and they're in the process of providing a proposal for additional numerical signage because I agree, it could be better. And I want our people to find our location as easily as possible. So the chip seal will be addressed. And we, you know... I don't want to have to commit to an unknown budget, you know? I mean, that's just not fair, you know, from a business standpoint, if I don't have... If I don't absolutely have to do it right now. But I'm obviously very aware of the issue. And, you know, we are going to... We are going to try to do the right thing. It's... I understand you don't like may, but, you know, at this time, I mean, I just think that's fair.
I think when you look at the amount of time that you're putting into this, and lawyers, and all this going through it, that it might be actually cheaper in the long run to just go ahead and do something like that.
Right.
Not necessarily that. It's nice to know that you're here in town. I know that I had a situation where we had a neighbor that had a wedding a year or so ago, and they sent out a letter to all the neighbors of here's our phone number to give us a call if there's a problem. Because, again, having thrown parties myself, I know that the most frustrating thing for a neighbor is something's going on, they don't have a contact. There's no number they can pick up and go, hey, you know, if you could just turn it down a little bit? These are little things that you can do to keep us from being here.
And I volunteered that they would, you know, they would get a list of phone numbers, you know? And I asked that, you know, as the buck stops with me, I'd appreciate they try the other numbers first. But we will provide numbers, okay? They will be able to, you know, get our staff and our Executive Director and myself if needed.
I don't think they need to call you directly. Just somebody who's there and responsible.
If they're not responding, they should...
The operation.
They should call me.
Right, a list of numbers, A, B, C. And hopefully, you don't get down to D, which is your home number. Because I think at that point, you would have a real problem that you would need to address in the way you do your operation. And I hope that you would address that. All right, thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you.
Do you have questions? Vice Mayor?
Come on back. We have some more questions for you. Thank you. So I know you mentioned that that treatment facilities like this are rarely welcomed into a neighborhood. And I understand that, and it's worth mentioning. But besides that, how do you understand the motivation for the appeal and its conditions? And specifically, the desire for commitments for you on all these little points? On some of them, you know, with the signage, you say, okay, you've got a quote, and that starts to feel like you're committed to addressing that. And some of the other ones, less so. The fan noise. Interested to know if you think it's just a question of opinion, whether it's loud or not, or if you're in a position to actually look at alternatives and, you know, show some follow-up on addressing that concern? But overall, I mean, I want to get to the bottom of, you know, what you're understanding it's about, why we're here tonight, and why these neighbors feel compelled to ask you to commit to a pretty long list of conditions?
I'm going to take the first one, I think is the easiest one regarding the fan, okay? Honestly, you know, I was there for the... Right now, the only meal that they're cooking for a fairly large number, which was breakfast. And I really didn't see any kind of noise issue. I don't see how, you know, anybody could really hear it, certainly over the street noise. Now, somebody mentioned walking their dog at 4:00 in the morning, or I'm assuming, you know... I mean, Grove Street's a lot quieter at 4:00 in the morning. I mean, if the fan was on at 4:00 in the morning, which I also pointed out is really not energy efficient since it's not being used, you know, it shouldn't be on at 4:00 in the morning. So, you know, under our watch, if we find out it's running, you know, past dinnertime, you know, somebody should have shut it off, and, you know, we'll deal with it. But again, I just didn't hear anything that, you know, would rise to, you know, a disturbing noise. I heard a lot of other noises, mostly traffic, you know, from that area. As far as why we're here tonight, if you want me to be honest, okay? I think if I owned a property adjacent, particularly adjacent to a bed and breakfast, a hotel, a restaurant, a winery, and now a treatment center, I wouldn't want it, okay? I would do everything in my power to see if I could dissuade those people from operating there, okay? That's why we're here tonight. These conditions, they want to make it more difficult for you to approve us, you know, from operating. That's why I believe we're here tonight. You know, I'm sorry that's the case. I can go through in the... I mean, there were so many discriminatory comments that were part of these proposed conditions by the appellants. You know, they started off by saying that they had neighborhood and safety concerns over this operation. Yeah, I'd like to know how this facility is going to be less safe than a bed and breakfast where people are here, you know, residing in those facilities to have a good time. You know, it doesn't make any sense to me. There was a comment about music, loud music. This is a treatment facility. We're not having wild parties at this location. It was certainly not having a large number of people with amplified music, loud music, you know, anything of that sort. There was a comment that we should limit our speaker system to music that not include rap music, okay? I mean, that's like a baffling, you know, comment to me. You know, I couldn't believe it was in black and white. So, you know, we can sit here and talk about, you know, the dust from the driveway and putting a tree up so that, you know, a neighbor doesn't see somebody hanging out in an area that they, as far as I'm concerned, would never hang out in very much, okay? But the bottom line is, I don't think the neighbors want anything there, okay? And they want to make this as difficult as possible, you know? So I'm sorry that's the case. I can't say it 500 times tonight. We are going to be good neighbors. We are going to do the right thing. I live here, okay? But even if I didn't live here, okay, I would want to do these kinds of facilities in other towns and be able to point to this one one day and say, look, you know, we've done the right thing, okay? Our neighbors, you know, who were concerned with these issues, you know, can now look back at this and say, you know, we were better off than we were before, or, you know, this is not the issue that we thought it was going to be. So, you know, that's where I come out.
So you... It's your opinion that these conditions and these requests are really just put forward as an irritant because they don't like the project for whatever reasons? And is that true?
Yeah, I think, you know, the more they could either, you know, have it put aside or limit it, you know, the better off, you know, they think it would be for, you know, for their own properties.
And do you believe that there's a lot of voluntary things you can do to improve the situation? Obviously, it's going to be difficult, I think, to legally require you to do a bunch of this stuff. But... But so you're volunteering to do a lot of these things. And do you feel like you've had a good track record of listening to and responding to the neighbors? And I would like to refer to the sort of handshake agreement I heard between your group and Ms. Kelly about the fence line. It sounds like there was an agreement at one point, and there's been no follow-through on that.
Well, there can't be follow-through because we're not there and operating and able to follow through on anything right now other than some minor things like get proposals for signage, okay? So there was never an agreement about the fence, per se. What there was, was a statement that I made that I thought it would be better for our clients not to see into her property, and I wanted to explore expanding the size of the fence, which I do, okay? I haven't done that yet. I haven't had the opportunity to do that, but I believe we're going to do that. There were a number of issued conditions when I met with the appellants that I was agreeable to, okay? As long as the language was correct. But I made it clear at that time that we, you know, we can only agree to what ultimately the city was, you know, legally able, you know, to put forth in conditions. You know, things like the fence, the gate being closed at all times, okay? We want this facility to be secure for our clients. I don't want people coming in, okay? Random people coming in. It's important to keep contraband out of these kinds of places. So the gate will be closed as much as possible. But, you know, on Refuge Day, those trucks have to apparently go all the way to the back of the property to get to the dumpsters. I believe they have to be open for a few hours. But if gates break, you know, which they do all the time, in my experience, you know, I don't want to be cited for our gates not being closed all the time. So I was agreeable to any conditions that were legally permissible, just about all of them. And as a result, the way this facility is going to operate is basically in, you know, going to be along the lines of every condition that the appellants are asking for. You know, there really isn't anything that I could see that we weren't agreeable to.
Thank you. One more question. Is it true that your group, the owners, Is it true that your group, the owners, still have an active application for a liquor license for the property? And if so, why?
First of all, it's not our group again, so I guess you should address that.
Hi, Patrick Wilhelm, thank you. We do have an active license pending, pending the approval and the transition of this property to a new use. We didn't want to release that or vacate it until we have approval here and we know we're going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions either. So, at this point, now I can invite the members. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Jonathan Wilhelm. I talked about this at Planning Commission regarding the traffic going, the trash trucks picking up trash in the back of the property. There was a concern about if there's more meals being served, where would there be additional traffic back there? When we built the property, we actually put enclosed trash bins right behind, near the street, on the south side, or near Ms. Kelly's property. Enclosed, spent quite a bit of money to make those so they would, in fact, cover it, not have the smell. We built those, and we're told that recology wouldn't pick them up there. They didn't want to get out of their trucks, maybe have to remove, which they do at Maya Comma, frankly, our other property, they get out, they have to move some things around. So, I would love it if you could actually have them be forced to actually pick them up there where they have an empty, two bins that said they're empty. All other traffic would also come there. Deliveries for food and everything would go in that paved, it happens to be paved as well, as a short run. So, obviously, adding ship seal and trying to keep the dust down incentivized, we're all incentivized to do it, and I would commit to, along with Keith, to doing everything we can there. But that would certainly, I think, help because you have those big trucks, or the only really big trucks that go back there on any kind of regular basis. So, I found that, early on, frankly, odd that we, again, I would have probably not spent the money to build these enclosures. So, that could be something probably council might be able to assist with in addressing some of the concerns relative to that. And again, the liquor license, we talked about it before. When we applied for a different liquor license, when we thought we were going to be building a club there, and were imposed parking requirements, ADA requirements by this city relating to that, you know, we did not plan on going into this particular business model. This was sort of put upon us by lack of that happening. So, there are elements of that property that, frankly, were built for quite a bit more use, and this certainly will have significantly less use. And again, I think the conditions that we feel are reasonable, we're absolutely going to do everything we can to be good neighbors. We've always tried to be good neighbors from the moment we bought the property. Sometimes misinterpreted or not felt that way by the neighbors, but it certainly was never our intention. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards has a question for.
Yeah, to the Wilhelm's. I did not know that you were going to be a part of this. I thought we were just talking about it. But since you have stepped forward, I guess there are tenant improvements going on. And when I had my problems with my neighbors, I went to the city and found out what kind of fence I could put in because I didn't want them looking in on my property of what was going on. It's very easy to go through. I know above six feet, you would need to do some engineering, some things like that. And the other thing, since you came forward, I was curious in the article in the Press Democrat, where you said that it wasn't about making money, it was about treating people. And I hope that that is something that, when you do, I know this is an upper-scale facility, but I know that some facilities do have scholarships and things to help people with needs, that you would follow through with that. It's not a condition, but you put that out there to the public in the newspaper article. So, I hope that when people need help, that, you know, the, I don't know what the exact rate is. I know it's not inexpensive because when you were putting this through, one of the things you said at that very first Planning Commission, when you were denied the club, was you might put a rehab center in. And I think that that was a spite at the community, and I think it's going to be a beneficial thing going forward. I'm just saying now where we're at now, it's a very beneficial thing. So, I think that we can keep the tone down, keep the expectations in line, and when you make statements like that, to follow through because I think this boils down to trust. And I'd like to do whatever I can to regain the trust between you and your neighbors by putting out things that I have done. Hopefully, that you're able to do those things. And simple things, working with your neighbors, can be a lot quieter in the long term. So, I hope that you can take that advice in those kind of a statement I have. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I've tried now three times to invite the members of the public to comment. The appellant and applicant teams may only speak during their presentation and not during this public comment period. So, it was limited to three minutes for speaker. How many people do we have who plan to make public comment here? Okay, three minutes works. Please come up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Kathy Birdsong, and thank you for letting me to speak on this. I have two suggestions that could be done in two months. Get a sound expert to.
Can you address your comments to the council, please?
Yep. They should get a sound expert to measure the sound so it's not just one voice against the other, and build the fence higher. That's all you need to do.
Thank you. Please come up to the podium if you want to make a public comment. I saw more than one hand raised. Come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Adams. I live at 1095 Grove Street. I am not an appellant. I live about a quarter mile north, just on the other side of the roundabout. I was able to attend the meeting on October 15th with Keith Greenberg. It was more than an hour. It was over in the conference room here. He came to the beast and actually spoke, and I thought he was patient, and his neighbors were pretty patient. I will tell you, I was not persuaded. I think to a couple of questions that council members have made, may and might does not mean will. This is a six-unit-by-right bed and breakfast, a six-unit-by-right treatment facility under the zoning. That's why you have conditional use permits. Mr. Greenberg was very adamant and clear to me when I asked him finally, why do you need 13? He said, we need to get to eight or 10 to make the financial model, and it was about money. He did share that the Wilhelm's are not just his landlords, they are partners in the Ruse LLC. They are business participants with him. I would urge you to look, please, at pages 157 to 161 in the packet. That is the impressions, as they were characterized by your staff of the meeting. I was at the meeting and believe that Mr. Greenberg's, while more succinct, are accurate for what they say. The three pages by the appellants, which have, here's what we talked about, here's what was said, here's the counterproposal, I believe are much more comprehensive. I do urge you to look at those. I understand that some of the appellant questions or requests were removed. There's one that I'm just horribly troubled about. Mr. Greenberg, at the time, said applicant new condition number 13 was something he simply couldn't agree to. That is your police department and your fire department conditions of approval. Councilmember Edwards asked about the 21 criteria that are in the application. Fire clearance is part of that. There are 13 conditions from your fire department. I cannot imagine why your planning department doesn't naturally put them in as a conditional approval. I'd ask you, as a neighbor down the street, please do that. Don't ignore your fire department and your police department, even if they are already part of other requirements. This property, as I understand it, was grandfathered in when this area was annexed by the county. This bed and breakfast has never had permit review. It's never had conditions by the fire department, as I understand things. Please include those. Those are on pages 116 to 118 of your packet from Fire Marshal McDonald. I support the fact that this could be a good treatment center. I think there have been some points made by your council that you should seriously deliberate on, that may and might doesn't mean will, and they can do this very, very well, or we might come back for further appeals when revocations or enforcement are required. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Bruce Abramson here in Healdsburg. I've been to a lot of meetings in my 30 years here, and I'm a bit appalled at the applicant's response here to the neighbors. It is amazing, in a small town that we have, where we have a good neighbor policy, and all of you are a part of it, that they will not do something unless they're pushed to do it. Ms. Kelly gave a very succinct presentation of several items that could be done that would help meet the needs. Very clear, very succinct. On properties I've seen before, you guys, not necessarily you as this council, have approved conditions that would help the neighbors. They can run their facility, but they need to also respect the neighbors. The issues of noise, the smell, the driveway, the dust, the privacy, the cutting down of the trees, wow, these are pretty simple items. I would hope that you would please respect them and enforce that through whatever you pass here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dennis Oliver.
Wait till you get to the mic so you can get recorded, please.
I think it's Mr. Greenberg. I never got an invite to the.
Can you please address the council?
I didn't get an invite to the breakfast, but maybe you put it out there to a few people. But what he talked about, the frustration is, he said that if he was one of the neighbors, I would hate the place, I'd want him to move away, whatever. Okay? The people here don't hate the Ruse, right? The thing we're doing here is asking for things to make it more bearable. You know, putting in an asphalt driveway or doing something with a fan is pretty simple stuff. I mean, yes, it's going to cost some money, but it's about us working together. And I don't get that vibe from them at all. So, that part's frustrating. And I disagree with, it's about the treatment center and the people that are going there. It's about money for these people. It's about money. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone come forward. Didn't hear anything for us to respond to. Do we have any additional questions from the council? Questions, not comments?
Yeah, question for our fire department and police chief. I noticed in the application that it said that you, your departments had to directly respond to the application, to respond and fill out a report. Is that a very detailed, does that answer all the questions that were asked about police and fire inspections and so forth? Have that been completed yet?
Good evening, Jason Boas, Fire Chief. The answer is yes. We did an inspection when the Ruse was redone and had met all the conditions, will be required to meet the same ones that were required before for the current use. And my understanding from speaking with our Fire Marshal, Division Chief, is that they've all been met at this point.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council at this point? Okay. So, now we have, if we needed or want, additional speaking time or rebuttal from the appellants. Up to 10 minutes, we'll time that as well.
Thank you, council members. I appreciate your deliberation and thoughtful questions as we move through this process. So, I did want to just reiterate, since I know we don't often have these types of items at the council, that this may be a high-end facility that is planned, but this conditional use permit will run with the land in perpetuity. So, even when these applicants move on to their next development project, this permit and the conditions will be imposed on future operators who come after them. So, while the Wilhelm's are business partners in the treatment center, I feel that it's been very unfair that they have put Keith forward as this new person in town because we've actually had a number of years in working and operating with them as owners of the bed and breakfast. Really, anything that has been said verbally, if it's not in writing, if it's not an imposed condition, the neighbors, myself, sorry, I'll speak just for myself, we don't have confidence that it's actually going to be put into motion because we've had several years, as well as statements like, I told Ms. Kelly I would take care of it, or when we wanted a phone number of who to call, Keith said Brian will be available if there's problems. And I said, does Brian live in Healdsburg? No. Does Brian live in California? No. So, who do the neighbors call, right? So, he has shared tonight that Keith plans to share a phone number of who we can call should there be issues. Of course, we hope there are not issues because we want to be in harmony with our neighbors and to be able to have this treatment facility that is helping those who need help. During the Planning Commission hearing, when Keith spoke, he said at the podium during the Planning Commission meeting, that the gates will be closed, but if a client wants to jump over the fence or go into a neighbor's yard because they need to get high or need access to drugs or alcohol, he can't keep them in, right? So, we don't have concerns about security, but if the applicant is saying that people might be jumping the fence, that could raise red flags. As a parent who's raising two kids next door, certainly want to be, you know, assured that there is going to be security and safety on the property. So, I think that the verbal commitments that have been made, we really appreciate that. We appreciate that they've offered, even in the past, when other neighbors have said we're having problems with dust on the driveway, and they went to the general manager of the bed and breakfast, and they said, oh, well, maybe we'll water it down, and that could help. We don't know if it ever got watered down, but it was also over 90 degrees that day. So, you can imagine when you put water on steaming hot rocks, it's not really going to last for very long, and the dust problem continued. So, we do have substantial evidence that traffic and parking from events on this site. Here's the funny thing, right? So, normally, at a CUP hearing, it's before anything's been built. You're coming before the planning department saying, we have plans to do XYZ, and we want to, you know, build a structure or do certain activities. Here, we actually have four years of this facility being in existence and the way that it's been operating. So, we actually know what the neighborhood impacts are. We don't have to guess what the sound might be from a future building that has a vent on top. The building's been built, and the vent is there, and it's loud. When there are meals being cooked, we smell the bacon all over the neighborhood. So, we would like to request that, should there be events on site, that those are limited in the number of people. We asked the planning department to put that condition, and it was agreed to by the applicant. That is because we know when there have been events on site, the traffic and parking impacts make it dangerous to pull out of the neighboring driveways. While they do have a number of parking spots on site, people tend to park along the roadway. We found out at our meeting with Mr. Greenberg that they were planning on hosting AA meetings on site. That was never written into their application in the project description, that they would be hosting folks from other parts of the community or outside of Healdsburg to come and attend those meetings there. And that could create impacts within the neighborhood, especially if the gates closed or there's no address posted. So, things like that, where we're just making requests for compatibility with the neighborhood, we would like to have those agreements in writing because we know, based on the four years of operating in neighborhood with the Ruse, that several things that have been committed to just haven't been followed through upon. Can I have my slides up? I just have the final slide to walk through. So, because of that, we do have the conditions, they've been printed and are in front of you as well. But the list of things that the neighbors are asking for, I just wanted to reiterate just the final one after this. So, there is a parcel clarification in the CUP that is more of a technical thing that we are asking the council consider. This is because there's two separate parcels, two separate APNs, and that we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page, that it's the 13-room residential treatment facility that is the only use on both of these parcels, and that there won't be a different use coming back for the second parcel at a later date. We have requested, and they have agreed, that meal preparation would end at 8:00 p.m., and this is because of the noise and smell from the commercial kitchen that was built. We never had that problem before when the Honor Mansion was operating because the kitchen was inside the main building. But when they built the pavilion building, saying there wasn't going to be a change of use, that's when those challenges have happened. So, outside of a unique incident they had previously agreed to end at 8:00 p.m., we've talked about the kitchen vent noise and odor reduction. We have substantial evidence that you can hear the sound from across the street and inside of homes. We've asked for a contact number of an on-site manager. They've agreed to do that. We've asked for a limited hosting of events or meetings with non-residents of the site because we believe that that will have additional traffic and parking impacts in the neighborhood, which makes visibility of pulling in and out of our driveways unsafe. The pickleball courts to not be used for folks coming in from outside like they are now. There's currently a condition on the property that says only residents or guests of the Ruse are supposed to be using the pickleball courts, but we know that many members of our community are taking a wonderful advantage of using those pickleball courts, but unfortunately, it does have an impact on noise in the neighborhood. We asked about not having musical instruments or microphones because we know that they've had several events planned there that have, you know, Healdsburg Jazz was planning a concert there and other events, even though they don't have permits to host any events without coming to the city. And then we also asked about the signage, that because we keep having people pull into our driveways thinking it's the Ruse, trying to check into our homes, it would be a very awkward conversation, I think, if someone tried to check into my house for their treatment. And so, we just are requesting that they put up a sign and put up an address that people can see from the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, any further comments from the appellant at this point? No? So questions of the appellant at this point from council?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to get clear on the use, the CUP. I'm guessing there is a permit for Bed and Breakfast, then there's a separate permit for this facility that was issued. And does that Bed and Breakfast still run continuous with the rehab center? Or if they're wanted to do another Bed and Breakfast, that would have to come back to the planning commission? In other words, I'm trying to get clarity on, the conditions on this could be done with any other application?
Mayor, I'm sorry to jump in. I just want to check with the mayor on protocol. I think we're having questions at this time of the appellant, so we can answer that if you'd like, or we can hold that question.
Let's hold that question. Yeah, let's do the questions for the appellant, and I think, did you have a question, Vice Mayor? Of the appellant?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Um, I think you're aware that, um, according to the staff suggestions in the agenda packet, that kind of the crux of what the council has to deal with is the legality of imposing conditions on, on this facility, if, you know, if we're not able or already doing that with other similar sorts of residential facilities. So there's a fairness and discrimination element there that was covered in the presentation earlier, but I just want, I mean, we haven't, we haven't really addressed that yet, and I think that's really kind of going to be the main thing that we have to grapple with in terms of the CUP here. And I just, I'd like to understand what the appellant's understanding is of, of that issue.
Um, I believe we, as neighbors and the other appellants, understand that the city has legal constraints with respect to what conditions can be opposed, imposed, sorry, on the project, but that also we have good neighbor policies and that any individuals can enter into an agreement between neighbors, whether it's about a fence, whether it's about paving a driveway, that individuals can, when we originally had met with Keith, he said that it would be illegal or against the city's rules for them to be required to pave the driveway, and we, you know, or required to do X. And we said, "The city may not be able to impose such a condition legally. However, neighbors can agree to do anything to help improve the quality of life in the neighborhood, and that is what, for the most part, we are requesting." Now that said, the city has put conditions on other buildings. My neighbor, Rick, is a contractor who has built many buildings in Healdsburg and other places in and around the Bay Area, and cities put conditions about vent hoods and fans, about noise, and how to both screen them when you have design review, if something looks ugly or unsightly, or if something is loud or could be loud, that cities oftentimes will ask that baffling be put, noise baffling be put around something that is going to be loud, especially if it's near a sensitive receptor or within a certain distance of neighborhoods. So that is something that the neighbors have requested to dampen sound. That is something that the city has imposed on other projects within the city of Healdsburg, other restaurants and other places. So we don't have a lot of people coming in to complain at City Hall about noise from vent fans, because a lot of the fans that are installed in the city have that baffling already included. Now, unfortunately, back in 2021, when the Pavilion Building was built, it was told that it was a renovation of an existing structure, first of all, which there was no structure there previously, and second of all, that it would be used sporadically just as a Bed and Breakfast for the small group of guests. And so never did the city have design review, never did the city have the opportunity to really evaluate this use. And so here we are. The building's been built, and now we already know what the impacts of that, you know, the noise is, same thing with the driveway. That driveway has always existed there, but it's been greatly expanded upon and has now become kind of a more main entrance, and that's why the dust is being sent over to the northern neighbors. There's five homes along that north boundary. You may have heard from some of those neighbors, the Alters live there, and a couple new homes that were built, and they all have experienced that same problem with dust. So that's the, the request is to keep it dampened. That is a condition that was already imposed by the Planning Commission for the, the maintaining the chip seal. I think the concern is, to Councilmember Edwards' question, what is, how do you know if it's being maintained, or what is the level of maintenance? And that's, I think, where we've had this challenge. Mr. Edinger actually spoke at the Planning Commission stating that, you know, he installed the chip seal, and you just got to maintain it, and then that will keep the dust down. And so I think the question is, is how often will it be maintained and into the future to ensure that the residents and the clients at the Ruse Treatment Center, you know, aren't experiencing that dust that's, that's bothersome?
Any further questions from council? No. Thank you. So the applicant, if you have any, you have additional time, 10 minutes, if you want to rebut any of these comments?
Yeah, it's, it's really beyond me to understand what we're doing here tonight, okay? We're talking about good neighbor policy, which has nothing to do, from what I understand, with what you're here to approve or not approve. The time I spent with the neighbors, okay, which apparently was ignored afterward until today, when they put out another set of conditions that they would like to see come into effect, my ask at the meeting that we had was pretty clear, okay? We were agreeable to all of their conditions with proper language. Things like, I couldn't agree to the gates being closed at all times, because that's just not something that I want to get cited for a year from now or six months from now when they're broken, okay? So we wanted, we wanted to make sure, yes, the pickleball courts are only going to be used by our residents or staff, okay? But I wanted to add consultants along with employees, just in case they wanted to cite me for some non-employee using the courts with our, with our clients. So we were agreeable to, I believe, all of these conditions with the clear understanding that we didn't believe that the city could implement a great deal of them, which is what I subsequently, subsequently heard from, from the staff at the Planning Commission. In fact, I had pretty much heard it before I went into the meeting, because we had an initial meeting with the staff. What continues to be clear to me is, this is about a council person, okay, that wants safety, okay? That's, that's concerned about this being a, you know, being, being what should be, in her eyes, a penitentiary, because she wants a walled-in facility where our clients are not going to jump into her yard, okay? That's what, that's what they think this is. Not a treatment facility that is trying to, you know, help people in a quiet, peaceful environment get better. We're not having wild parties every night. There's no issue over sound and noise and, 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 you know, overall, you know, rowdiness. What I'm concerned about is the flip side of that, okay? Is when the, when our neighbors have parties, okay, and they're drinking and smoking or whatever they're doing, okay, how that's going to influence my clients. So what I said to Ms. Kelly when we walked the property is, I was probably going to look into seeing if we could raise our fence, particularly in her direction. Not, "I would do it," okay? I never said I would do a lot of things that she's saying I would do. I said I would explore it. I don't, because I don't even know what the code is relating to, you know, expanding the fence. I haven't been the property owner. I wasn't the person that built the original fences, okay? But I'm, I'm concerned about creating a, a facility that is best for our clients. Having said that, okay, you know, if our neighbors want an email from me or a written statement that we're going to be good neighbors, that we're going to do these things that we've talked about, I'm happy to do it, okay? But that's not, I didn't think that was for this meeting. I really didn't, okay? My understanding of this meeting is, you know, we can only do what we could do that was legally permissible, okay? And that's how we've tried to respond. So, you know, for our neighbors, you know, I have made statements about what we'll do, what we'll try to do, okay? And I have my word that we'll do, okay? And that's all I can do. Thank you.
Thank you. No, not at this time. Correct? Sorry, please. So do we have questions of the applicant from the council?
Well, I'd like to make a question.
So, no. Our, our attorney says no. Oh, so no questions for the applicants at this time? So therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing and return this item to the council for deliberation and action. So, would anybody like to start with the deliberation? No?
I'll, I'll start. This has been a very complex issue, and we have specific guidelines that we need to stay within. And my personal feelings are not important in this. I think that, at the end of the day, I would like to have everybody happy, but I, I think that we need to look at, we've had legal opinion in the city, we've had staff go through this point by point. It wasn't that we were just given a, a maybe. And particularly when I'm looking at staff recommended on the noise level, there was no presentation of, there's this decibel that we're hearing that's above a certain requirement. Again, I can agree with staff on that, that there was not a specific decibel level that we're talking about when we're mentioning this one. So I think that we need to stick within the guardrails or the, or the rails that we have that we're working in. And there are lots of things that I, you know, I'm still curious about the CUP, how that runs, but that's not apparent of what we are talking about. We're discussing this particular use, this applicant. So that's where I am going through with my discussions.
Thank you. Councilmember Higley, you have comments?
Yeah, I kind of have the same thoughts. We've got what we, you know, the guardrails of what we can do. Clearly, there's some improvement that could be made with the neighbors, I think. Just hearing the, the comments tonight, you know? But at the end of the day, you know, this comes down to treatment facility, and there's special protections. Are we treating them differently? And then the bigger concern that I have is, what can be enforced? And we've seen this animosity between the neighbors, and when I see things about, you know, going down to the minutia of music about no rap, heavy metal, or the like, I DJ and a lot of really good music that contains rap. I've heard Justin Bieber rap. I mean, it's, how, that, when I saw that, it just kind of highlighted, all right, it's just getting a little bit microbeannagy to the point of, who, so, city staff get called and says they were playing a rap song, or heavy metal, or I don't know what the like is defined, you know, how you define that, but, and I get it, that kind of change that came out, but that was in the agenda packet that I studied over the weekend. And it's that kind of thing that raises concern with me of, you know, the city and enforceability and the, you know, the phone calls, and then does that trigger? And that's why I asked a question about the, the approval and, and the appeal process if, if there's a complaint. Personally, I think what everybody should be looking to is the requirements by the state. I mean, at the end of the day, this is a rehab center that is there to help people improve their lives. And I think we need to lead, lead with empathy. You know, when we're looking at some of that, I think we've heard some of these concerns, you know, back when we had the discussion about the L&amp;M Village. You know, the smoking, and I remember raising the concerns at the time, when they were going to take out the pool and what's going to happen. "Oh, that's where people are going to be smoking." And it was right by an apartment building. And so I'm, you know, empathetic, but I remember Stephen, as well as Margaret at the time, I think it was Margaret, saying, "When people are going through this trauma and really trying to lift themselves out, and they need all the help that they can get, smoking is one small thing that kind of brings pleasure and kind of helps that process." So when I see some of these things, and, you know, I, I appreciate the, you know, the comments I heard, I think, at the Planning Commission about, you know, the location of the smoking areas, because I, you know, I think that goes back to being a good neighbor. And, you know, some of the other things that were, you know, the gates, I, I understand the concerns, I, you know, and security, same things we had over at the L&amp;M. But, you know, when, some of the, the key things, I think, that I'm all for the parties working together to mitigate the issues like the sound. You know, I think it, it would be hard for me to go anything beyond what we already have outlined in the code in terms of sound volumes measured by decibels and, you know, whatever's in the code, to me, that's kind of where we need to be at. The dust, the only comment I would say is, you know, instead of just water, make sure it's recycled water. But I think that's, you know, the, I, I think those concerns are real when you're talking about the garbage truck has to go all the way back. I don't know what the process is, if it's, you know, to reopen and relocate it or whatever, but, you know, the, the setup is what it is. And so I appreciate the applicant saying that they're, you know, going to make sure that, you know, take care of, make sure that, that the, the dust isn't going up. And I think the code also requires it too, doesn't it? About the dust?
It does, yes.
Okay, and so what's the process? Does the neighbor just call the city and say, "It's pretty dusty, and my dishes are covered in dust," and the city goes out?
Yeah, so the Planning Commission did add a condition of approval that says, "The chip seal driveway shall be maintained in order to minimize dust." So if the neighbors could call, and we would go out there and...
And that's existing, that's nothing that we need to really add.
Right, and we would ask them.
Yeah, so I'm fine with that. The signage, I appreciate, I mean, seeing the pictures, that would be annoying if people are knocking on my door just because they can't find the right address. So I appreciate, you know, the applicant's looking into kind of clearing that up. I could see where the, I mean, it's a nice-looking numbers, but there's a plant right in front of it, so I, that, I get it. I mean, as a neighbor, that would be frustrating, and that would be an irritating thing if people are walking into your kitchen thinking they're checking into the hotel. The meetings, you know, what struck me was, you know, the, the concern with the meetings was about the traffic. And this goes back to, this is a rehab facility. To me, I look at that as, these are people that are seeking out a way to get healthier, get better, to improve their lives. I, you know, I think the, the number that was in there is fine, but, I mean, if there's an opportunity to, to have these meetings and help improve people's lives, I, I think that's part of the mission of what this facility is aiming to be. So I have like notes all over the place. I'm not giving a nice, concise, uh, my comments, but I'm inclined to keep the requirements to what's already in the code and what is required by the state. And I just, you know, based on what I heard tonight, I think, you know, there's one good way to be a good neighbor, and it works both ways, and it's to be a good neighbor. If there's an issue, call your neighbor, not your lawyer. I mean, this has been going on a long time, and I think that goes to both sides. I think there's an opportunity with what, what's being proposed to, you know, start new, turn the page, and work with the neighbors, and try to defuse some of the tensions that we've heard tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Um, like I said before, I, and kind of following what Councilmember Higley said, what's, what's really legally possible for the Planning Commission and for the city council to impose upon this project in light of these, these conditions that have been requested, it's, it's, it's really, it's challenging to move on any of them. And if you read the agenda packet, you'll... And if you read the agenda packet, you'll understand deeply, you know, why that's the case in each one of these. We have-- I think we can isolate, like, the noise problem with the-- with the fan. It would kind of need to respect the fact that we have a new noise ordinance, and it may very well be out of date. I think it is. That could be fixed, but it couldn't be fixed tonight to address this one little problem. Maybe it's not a little problem. But it's-- I-- you know, I don't-- I don't know that-- I feel like we have the authority to make these sorts of changes in this case. And many of the points made about the gate closure were valid. It's not something that we can, I think, legally impose or enforce. And so, it goes on and on. But-- so, that's frustrating, but I want to acknowledge that this appeal is based on real concerns that probably could have been handled differently. But what's really-- you know, the elephant in the room here is that there's-- there's a history of mistrust in-- and with this whole property going back several years now. And that's really made it difficult for there to be a neighborly agreement. But that's really where we need to go right now, I think. And so, it's been mentioned on both sides that there needs to be agreements made and promises made, and more importantly, actions made that show that these agreements and these intentions are real. And so, I really respect the fact that this hearing happened so that everybody in the room knows, and everyone in the community knows, that there's eyes on this project, and that really, I think, everybody has a responsibility to do the right thing. And everyone will be happier because of it. And it's not going to be because of us nitpicking with the law or the CUP. It's going to be because people did the right thing. And it's frustrating if there's been any mistrust to rely on promises and handshakes and so on. And I-- but I think that's really what we're left at. And if there's any consolation here, it's just that there's been a lot of daylighting here of what's worrisome, and what needs to be fixed, and what needs to be changed. And that's a really important thing.
Thank you. Yeah, I-- my comments are, you know, I'm personally not inclined to overturn a planning commission ruling, and I also-- I watched the meeting twice, and I think that the planning commissioners spent a lot of time talking about the issues and trying to address them and the conditions that they added to the CUP. And I wonder if we might just restate those here, the conditions that were added. Is that something we could do just to-- so, we can know that-- I mean, I think they addressed the dust, they addressed the noise, they addressed the If we could just sort of recap those, I think that might be helpful as well.
Yes, I can do that. So, one of the conditions that was changed was condition four. It used to say, "This conditional use permit shall be suspended automatically," and that was changed to say, "may be suspended automatically." The condition six was added, where it limits the maximum number of attendees on site to 30, and shall not include amplified sound. Condition seven-- just clarified that noise shall conclude by 8:00 p.m. So, this had to do with all outdoor activities or events attended by clients and staff that produce noise outside of a traditional residential noise level shall conclude by 8:00 p.m. The chip-seal driveway shall be maintained in order to minimize dust. A condition of approval number nine, the applicant shall investigate ways to reduce odors associated with the kitchen facilities. And condition of approval number 10, regarding the smoking areas, one smoking area was removed. The one that was in the bocce ball area, or was originally proposed in the bocce ball area, was removed. And also, we added to that condition that smoking areas shall not be closer than 50 feet to any property line.
Thank you for that. So, yeah, I think it's really important to kind of keep our eye on the ball here and what we're doing here, and I think every council member has suggested that. Our role is not to, you know, negotiate the deals between the appellant and the applicant. Our role is to determine whether or not it meets the rules and legal aspect, which I-- you know, at being a protected class, I think that's a really important thing that we need to consider and make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position of adding something that's illegal. And also, I think, as Councilmember Hagley mentioned, the ability to enforce, right? We don't have a huge enforcement code group to be able to do it, and it would be after the fact, be putting us in an untenable position on some of these conditions, in my opinion. So, I do know that there's a lot of apparent mistrust between the applicant and the neighbors, and I hope that you can work to work on that. You've talked about it a lot, and, you know, good neighbor policies are important, but that's not something that this council can or should dictate at this point. So, I think that-- I think that's enough said. Would anybody like to make a motion at this point?
I'd like to recommend a motion that the city council adopt a resolution, attachment one, affirming the planning commission action approving a conditional use permit for 13-bed substance abuse treatment facility at 891 and 893 Grove Street, APNs number 089-120-069 and 089-120-070. Second the motion.
Can we have a rule call, please? Vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrod?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes. So, thank you. Thank you for all your work and being here tonight. Could we take a five-- five-minute break at least, maybe five, 10 minutes? Come back at 8:25? Thank you. Sorry.[1051.75]
I don't have, oh, there we go. I have a mic now. You're kind of power crazy when you can talk into a microphone. So if everybody could take a seat again and we'll start the next presentation, which is another public hearing. Mitigated Negative Declaration, I won't read the whole thing. We have project manager Tom Campbell and senior planner Ellen McDowell back for the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing for the Mitigated Negative Declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan. Next slide, please. The recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan for the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan Project and approving the final Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan. Some background for you. In July 2019, the city launched a public process to develop a master plan for the redevelopment of Badger Park. In 2021, the city council reviewed a draft of the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan, expressed support and directed staff to move forward with preparation of the appropriate environmental analysis for the city council's consideration of the master plan. And the city engaged Rainey Planning and Management in March 2023 to complete an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, or an IS MND, and Associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Next slide, please. Here you can see Badger Park highlighted in blue. It's approximately 20 acres in size, located at 750 Heron Drive. It's bounded by multifamily apartments on the north, single-family residences to the west and to the east, and the Russian River to the south. Next slide, please. The master plan for the Badger Park Redevelopment Project is the outcome of numerous requests to install flush toilet restrooms in the park, the desire to enhance river access for the community, and address aging infrastructure and components like the play structure. Rather than tackle these issues one at a time, the master plan proposes a long-term comprehensive plan to improve the park and enhance access to the Russian River. The park will be redeveloped in multiple phases due to cost and available funding. The master plan incorporates these goals by removing invasive species, improving trails and updating amenities, expanding parking, expanding the community garden, adding sports courts. The specific types of sports will be determined in the design development stage, adding restrooms and adding river access points, including a canoe and kayak launch. Next slide, please. This is a graphic of the redevelopment master plan. Following this, we have some zoomed-in graphics. So I'll just point out on this larger graphic, you can see on the top right there, the entry from Heron Drive near the existing electrical substation. That's number 15 on the graphic. You can see the central lawn in the center, community gardens below the electrical substation, playground, which is number four on the graphic. That would be expanded and reconstructed. There's a new restroom building, number eight. It's a little hard to see here. And then trail improvements and river access as well. Next slide, please. So this is a zoomed-in graphic. Here you can better see the expanded parking lot. You can also see a relocated and expanded dog park. That's number seven. You can see the sports courts. Those are labeled number nine. The trail improvements and a better connection to Second Street and Tucker Street. That's what you see on the left hand there. And also some invasive species removal to improve that area and the connection. Next slide, please. Here you can see the expanded community garden, the new restroom building, some space dedicated for existing and future utilities. Those are labeled number 15. And there's a kayak launch labeled 17 at the bottom right of the graphic. Next slide, please. A mitigated negative declaration, or MND, has been prepared for the project in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act. The MND assessed all of the environmental factors related to the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan. The MND identifies areas where mitigation is necessary to reduce potentially significant impacts to less than significant. Several studies were prepared to support the MND. These included an air quality and greenhouse gas modeling results report, biological resources assessment, an aquatic resources delineation, environmental noise assessment, and transportation industrial, uh, transportation initial study checklist. Mitigation measures are identified in the areas of biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, noise, and tribal cultural resources. A mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, is included in the agenda packet, starting on page 171. Next slide, please. Given Badger Park's riverfront location, the biological resources assessment outlines the master plan's potential to result in adverse effects to special status plants and wildlife. The implementation of several mitigation measures will reduce these impacts to less than significant. Those mitigation measures include conducting rare plant surveys, scheduling water work in the Russian River when water levels are low, engaging a qualified biologist to complete surveys for several animal species, post-construction measures, and treating the Willow Island portion of the site as a protected habitat area which visitors shall not access. Next slide, please. The biological mitigation measures also include reducing adverse impacts to riparian habitat, reducing impacts to state or federally protected wetlands, and engaging a qualified biologist to provide training and monitoring during construction. Other mitigation measures not detailed in these slides but included in the MMRP are engaging an archaeologist, completing a geotechnical analysis of the project site, and constructing a six-foot-tall noise barrier wall if pickleball courts are to be constructed. Just a note, as you could probably imagine, with all of these requirements, we'll have some additional project costs as well when we get to implementing a first phase of this master plan. Next slide, please.
All right, so Tom spoke a little bit about the MND and the MMRP, and I'm here to talk about our procedures and how the city approaches our SEQA process. So the city's environmental review process is really built around protecting Healdsburg's natural environment. It's essential to our community's quality of life and our overall character. It also is intended to serve as a practical guide, something that staff, applicants, and decision-makers can all easily understand and apply when we're reviewing projects under SEQA. And a goal of our SEQA guidelines and SEQA implementation procedures is to encourage public access and participation in the environmental review process, ensuring transparency and community involvement. Finally, the process is designed to integrate project planning with environmental protection so that the potential impacts are identified early and addressed through thoughtful project design and mitigation. Next slide, please. So the city's adopted SEQA implementation measures, went to the planning, well, our procedures are in place, and we took them to the Planning Commission on October 14, 2025, and the Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the MND and MMRP for the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan. Next slide, please. So the city's adopted SEQA implementation measures, went to the planning, well, our procedures are in place, and we took them to the Planning Commission on October 14, 2025, and the Planning Commission adopted a resolution recommending that the city council adopt the MND and MMRP for the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan. Next slide, please.
So the process and timeline of where we've been so far with this project.
The environmental review process began for this project back in March of 2023 with project initiation and preparation of the environmental studies. The project review and circulation period took place from August 28 to September 26, 2025, for the 30-day review period. During that time, a notice of intent was published to the Press Democrat and the Healdsburg Tribune, mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of the site, as well as posted to the county clerk and the state clearinghouse. On October 14, 2025, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and adopted a resolution recommending the approval of the environmental document. And tonight, on November 3, the city council is considering adoption of the MND and MMRP. And if approved, staff will need to file a notice of determination within five days of the council action. So I will be posting to the county of Sonoma, as well as to the state clearinghouse, a notice of determination.
Next slide, please. And again, the recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or plan for the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan Project and approving the final Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Does council have questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation. This is such an exciting milestone. I wanted to ask about the, you mentioned about Willow Island. I know during some of the planning process with the community park design team, is that what we were calling? Yep. That there was, the goal was to try to get more access to the river, aside from the canoe and kayak launch, which is real, you know, you're getting in the water, real river access. Can you talk a little bit about where Willow Island sits on that master plan map and how that impacts what was previously planned? Is that the location where we had a pathway that was like jutting out towards the river? And will we no longer have that because of the environmentally sensitive habitat area?
Yeah, if, if we could pull up the, the overall master plan slide again, that would probably be helpful. But the, you're remembering correctly. And so the graphic that was in the presentation tonight shows we've taken the improvements that were planned for Willow Island off. So on this graphic, you can see on the bottom left that Willow Island is basically below that kind of number 17 and that what looks like sandy area. There's a seasonal island, I would say. And so we did have an additional river access point that has not, that had, as of this master plan, had not been designed in detail, but was contemplated. And then trails kind of getting over there and some different infrastructure like that. So that was taken out of this master plan as a result of the mitigation measures that have been put on the project. And so now you can see number 17 there. There would be some river access, not on Willow Island, but in that general area. And that would have to be designed and really figured out in design development.
Okay, I guess my comment, now that I understand where Willow Island is, so that it's where those two arrows are in the view shed?
On the bottom.
Kind of thing, bottom left, okay. I, I think that makes sense. I'd be a little concerned if we don't have that stream flow that's seemingly creating Willow Island as an island, as opposed to just the continuation of the bank from like where the number 17 is, then as we get further into project development, I'd be concerned that we would lose that access point altogether for fear that people might just tread on to Willow Island because there's no way to keep them off of it. So I don't know if we're going to go back and look for other places to then have more access to the river. But I just wanted to like, I know we're not, we're in the question phase and not the comment phase, but I'll just throw it out there that I'm curious. How would we continue to try to make river access possible? And knowing that that was one of the big initial items that was being pushed for when we did redesign this park, how can we try to make sure that even with that mitigation measure and, and not being able to have access there, that we can still find access points to the river? Because I would hate to go through this whole process and then we really have very limited river access.
Yeah, it's something that will definitely have to be figured out. And as you know, the, we have a million-dollar matching grant from the Sonoma County Agriculture and Open Space Preservation District. And, and that, a part of that grant is majorly focused on river access. And so the first phase of work for this project will be about river access specifically. And so it's something we'll have to figure out, knowing that Willow Island has to sort of been, be set aside as almost like preserved habitat.
Totally, great. And then you mentioned a condition about should the sport court later be determined that we are going to build pickleball courts, which will happen in the more detailed design phase, and that we would have to build a sound barrier? Can you talk a little bit more about that and where that would be constructed?
Sure, it's basically north of the sports courts. So it would separate the sports courts from the multifamily housing to the north of the project site. We do have Nick Papani from Rainey Planning on. He could probably describe in a little more detail the specifics of what are proposed. But it's a, I believe, a six-foot-high noise barrier wall. Nick, maybe you could help me out? Okay, he's coming.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Oh, but too loud. Well, first, thank you very much for the flexibility to attend virtually, Nick Papani, Vice President, with Rainey Planning and Management. We authored, in concert with the city, the mitigated negative declaration before you. And thanks for the question. Maybe just to add a little bit more. We hired a noise consultant to perform a technical noise analysis of the proposed project, which included estimating the noise levels from pickleball courts, should they be located in that Area 9. In comparing the estimated levels to the city's noise standards, which would be a 60 decibel standard, the noise consultant determined that a six-foot sound barrier would be required, six-foot-tall sound barrier would be required along the northern edge of the pickleball courts to attenuate or reduce the noise levels to below that 60. I think with the sound wall, they estimated that levels would be 55 decibels, so five decibels below the city's noise standard. And so mitigation measure 13-1 of the SEQA document requires that if pickleball courts are included in the final design level drawings, that a six-foot-tall barrier should be constructed. And that would, could be either concrete panels, concrete masonry, block wall, or even earthen berms, or a combination of any of those.
Great, thank you, appreciate that detail. And I know we're, we haven't yet, you know, gone down the path of determining what the sport courts may be. And that makes a ton of sense, just given, you know, how hot and heavy pickleball has come on the scene. But we don't know how long, if it's here to stay or not, or maybe basketball, or there's some new sport that may, you know, appear in the next 10 years before we get the funding to build this thing. So I totally understand, we haven't made that determination yet. But it does seem that there are a lot of very eager pickleballers in this community who are, you know, excited about having the opportunity to get new courts built. Should we decide in the future, Nick, this question for you. Should we decide in the future that we are going to be moving forward with pickleball courts there, or some other sport court that may produce noise, and given the proximity to that residential use? Do you, is, is that type of noise attenuation wall, sound barrier wall, is that something where we, if we wanted to make sure? I know that's a senior community that's there. It's, well, it's a, you know, deed-restricted affordable housing. So residents who, you know, may have sensitivities or people who may, you know, have disabilities and not be working. So they're home during the day when the sports will be happening. Is, is the noise component, if we make it higher, is that less noise? and some kind of improvement is, is done there, even just like solar lighting or something. So especially now, our first days of, of not having daylight savings time. By five o'clock, it's pretty dark there, and there's still a lot of people who are walking their dogs and coming through that way. So I think the plan is fantastic and I look forward to seeing it implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to make comment? Not seen anyone come forward, we'll bring it back. Would anybody like to make a motion? You have further question, go ahead.
I just wanted to follow up on Mr. Pearlman's comments. Do you know if we evaluated in the conceptual plan to put lighting or pathway improvements on that access point to Tucker and Second?
I am not entirely sure, mostly because I wasn't here during that process. I believe that is part of the park, even though the graphic doesn't show. Mark will help us out.
Hello, Mayor, Members of Council, yes, that, that strip was included. We acknowledge it as part of the park area, and it actually makes some of the connection to what would be the more natural play areas on the east side of the park that's wooded right now. So the park extends quite a bit further than what it looks like. And that area, including the connection over to First Street, was part of, is part of the overall master plan.
And do we have plans to improve that, those, are the fences the city's responsibility? Or they're the private property owners?
Private property.
Have we ever communicated with them about the status of the fences? Or that they're falling down, or that that could be problematic?
We, we can look at it. We do have concerns about ADA compliance. If we go in and start doing improvements in there, we may be in line for a larger project than what we originally planned. We can certainly look at the fence, the fence concern, and also if there's temporary things that we can do to improve the, the trail.
And then ultimately it'll be lit? Or we don't know yet?
That, that really is an address in the master plan. It's, it's something you get into when you do design development, when the project's actually ordered. And then we talk about lighting then. It would probably make sense because we would probably relamp some of the park area as well. But the portion of the park that will come before you in a few meetings is really focused more around the restrooms and the Miracle Bridge play area and some of the riverfront improvements. So we haven't really talked about detailed design work for any of the other part of the park.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, any other questions? Council, or Vice Mayor?
I, I just wanted to say that, you know, a lot of times we see SEQUA reports, and it's pretty dry stuff. But this was, was really fascinating, and I, I think it kind of reflects what's fascinating about this park. I mean, there was a lot to learn about the flora and fauna in this area and how it's handled, and what may be living there, what, you know, what could potentially continue to live there and so on. And, and that there was a plan for addressing environmental concerns in a very careful way. So I really appreciate that, and it was, it was really, it was really great to dive into this one and just to appreciate the depth of, of this resource for our community. So I'd like to make a motion to adopt a, adopt a resolution adopting the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan for the Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan Project and approving the final Badger Park Redevelopment Master Plan.
Second.
Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrod?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
Thank you both. Appreciate that. So moving on here to old business, we do not have any. But new business we do. The Foley Family Community Pavilion Phase One Operational Plan, Recreation Supervisor Matt Milde and Active Adult and Senior Services Supervisor Anna Grant.
Hello, Matt, Mayor, Members of Council, thanks for having me. I'm Matt Milde, Recreation Supervisor with Community Services, joined by, with
Anna Grant, your Active Adult and Senior Services Supervisor with the Community Services Department.
We're excited here to talk to you about the Foley Family Pavilion Operational Plan. So next slide. So the recommended action on the table is to review the Phase One of the Operational Plan, which includes how we're going to treat City, Hillsburg Farmers Market, Cities and City Partnered Special Events, and those, the criteria. And then there's also a recommendation for events that would remain on the plaza to, to help kind of ensure that the commitment to the Foley Pavilion is maximized and helps reduce impact to the plaza. Next slide. And what is being considered tonight is just review of the, the Operational Plan under the Phase One, under the City and City Partnered Events, and a review for the City Signature Events, as well as a couple of Parks and Rec Commission recommendations. What's not included in tonight's presentation is any approval of specific events or approval of the Special Events Master Calendar Events. That'll be considered at your, anticipated for your December first City Council meeting. These items aren't included primarily because the new pavilion is unknown in terms of its interest and demand, and also since no funding has been allocated under the current budget. But staff will submit for consideration in the next budget. I'd also like to note that as far as the farmers market goes, dates, times, and program considerations will be identified in conjunction with an update to their existing use agreement. They have an existing use agreement for use of the West Plaza Parking Lot and the plaza that will need to be updated to the Foley Pavilion, and so those discussions still need to happen. Next slide.
So this one's for me, a little bit about our pavilion. Our pavilion will be managed by the Community Services Department, and the hours of operation of the pavilion will align with the parks that we have here in our community already. So the pavilion will be open from six AM to 10 PM daily. It's open for passive use, people can come in, drop by, cool off when it's hot outside, stay dry when it's wet outside. It does have four beautiful restrooms that'll be open during permitted events. There's free public wifi. We have a beautiful catering kitchen that's onsite and a waste structure, et cetera. Those things, as well as alcohol and amplifying sound, will be things that the user would be able to use with a permit or during permitted events. And then just some little things about daily operations. We wouldn't allow wheeled or motorized devices under the pavilion canopy, unless those wheeled devices are an assisted device for someone. And then the parking lot, and more on the parking lot later, is open and available for public use unless it is reserved for a permitted event. So the next slide has a fantastic picture that really gives you a bird's eye view of what the pavilion will be. So this public parking lot is going to be open to the public unless it is being utilized during an event. And not all events will need the use of this parking lot. So some events will just be the pavilion canopy area, and the parking lot will still be open to the public. That's forty-two brand new parking stalls right here in the downtown core, three of which are handicap accessible. And again, the parking lot and parking in the parking lot will align with our park hours, six to ten. And what's unique about our space is our neighbors, the Duchamp Hotel. They've been fantastic neighbors during construction. During non-reserved hours, access to the Duchamp Hotel will be made available for hotel guests. So if you're looking at that aerial image of the arrow entering into the parking lot, if you were to follow that straight down, would run directly into the backside of the Duchamp Hotel. So when it is, the parking lot is not being used for an event, this area will be open and accessible for Duchamp Hotel guests. I, I mentioned no motor vehicles underneath the canopy. And what's, another unique feature of the pavilion is a lot of the infrastructure is built into the space. So if we do have an event and someone is using food trucks that would normally need generators that run on fossil fuel, or to, you know, to haul the generator into their, into their tent or something, whatever food preparation they're doing that would need a generator, they wouldn't need to bring that generator with them or have those fossil fuels because they could plug directly into power that is along the island there in the parking lot. So no need for generators and loud sounds. Next slide, please. In the pavilion, there is a catering kitchen. And just to be clear, I, you know, you learn quite a bit when doing new projects. A catering kitchen is a specific type of kitchen. It's not a commercial kitchen, and it's not intended for full-scale commercial food prep of raw ingredients. What does that mean to the user? To the user, it means that the kitchen can be for warming, staging, and catering support. There won't be cooking allowed in the kitchen. However, there is a designated cooking pad outside of the pavilion in the open air parking lot. So if you get to, if you're using the kitchen during your event, there will be access to a three compartment sink, a three door refrigerator, and tables to do your food preparation and catering. I mentioned the really exciting outdoor designated cooking area. On that area is where you can do your open flame cooking, and that pad does have access to water. And typical to other events, people that are cooking must be providing in line with fire code, fire extinguishers, et cetera, dispose of their grease offsite. Next slide.
Under, under Phase One, the city will operate with the two main types of users that I mentioned. And there's a number of space configurations that events could, event operators can use. One is just using the pavilion itself and keeping the parking lot open. Second is using the pavilion and the parking lot as an entire event space. The third is with that plus the addition of North Street closure. Next slide. Looking at safety and security, standard events under a hundred people. No, no security will be required, but we will have an onsite staff member available at each event. For large events, or events, or any event that has alcohol, there will be a security requirement. And then during those non-event hours, when it's non-permitted events, just day-to-day hours, there is a facility camera that, cameras that operate twenty-four seven along with PD Patrol. Next slide. There's, under the current operation plan, there's kind of two tiers of use. As we mentioned, first is the Hillsburg Farmers Market. No fees are being proposed issued to the Farmers Market. We currently accept fees for use of the Farmers Market under their existing use agreements, about five percent of their stall fees from the previous year. So we're, which roughly equates to a little under two thousand dollars a year. So we're proposing waiving those in the future. We're, we're not setting any limitations on when the Farmers Market could reserve the facility for their markets or, or market-related events. And they will need to operate under an updated use agreement, as I mentioned. So we'll need to work out the details. If they wish to adjust, change, anything of their operation, we'll have those conversations. And then there's no changes to the Farmers Market schedule to accommodate special events, meaning the Farmers Market will always be able to operate on, you know, Tuesday mornings and Saturday mornings other locations if there's a conflict, we'll need to find another place to host their event. But there are options where they could work in with the market. So for instance, if there's an evening event that wishes to occur after the market, we have set up a way, a mechanism. So while the market's unloading or wrapping up for the day, another event can be loading in as well. So, next slide. And then the second tier is City, City Partnered Events. Again, just like we standard, just as we treat other City Partnered Events, we don't charge any fees. The idea is that we would accept two years of advance notice for event rentals, and that would mean a little bit of adjustment to the special event policy. This would also allow, in terms of how we treat partnered events, we do an annual cycle where event partners can request partnership for City Council in one year in advance, a little over actually. But we would change that to two years to accommodate the, kind of the nature of events that would come through. We anticipate, some event organizers have expressed they need longer lead times and those kinds of things. So we try to accommodate that. Next slide. And then in terms of staffing plan, so we're going to have to find a way to staff it with existing resources. Our existing resources that we're going to need to commit are full-time community services staff, and that's going to be the bulk of scheduling and contracts and, and permit coordination, any sort of the day-to-day use of the facility. There's going to be trash and janitorial, and should there be issues with anything onsite that would need to be fixed, preventative maintenance, preventative maintenance items and the like, that would fall to community services staff. Part-time staff will play a role on, in my, part of my events team. They'll prepare the site for special events, be onsite during events, and ensure the facility is taken good care of. Our parks, our part-time parks crew will also lend a support in terms of supporting with landscape maintenance and other just day-to-day needs. And then there's, let's not forget the folks that, from other city departments that support our operations when it comes to events. Central Services helps with risk management, insurance agreements. Information Technology helps with security, wifi if we have technical issues. PD, obviously for support and event review. Fire and Pelic works also for event review. And so those play also a role when we add on events as well. Next slide. And then basically the pre-event delivery basically looks very similar to how we treat events now, which is accepting that permitted application for review. Staff will meet onsite with the organizer to ensure we're, we're fulfilling the logistical elements of the event that we're committed to. We'll do things like noticing to the neighbors for road closures and the like. Next slide. And then during the event, we'll have staff, as I mentioned, we'll have staff assigned to each event. Staff will manage the restroom and trash while onsite. However, the city will only handle the city-owned equipment. For instance, if we have a user that brings in, let's say, an event stage or has event equipment, it's been kind of our practice not to get involved with any sort of contracted or personal equipment. And then the facility power and restrooms will be made available for public use during events, as well as the wifi, which will be always on. And then on the post-event side, staff will be onsite to help inspect the facility when the user's done, ensure the site's looking clean at the end of the, end of the, end of the rental. Next slide. And then to reduce the impacts of special events on the Hillsburg Plaza and to maximize the community investment in the pavilion, staff is recommending that specific parameters for the use of the plaza are established for signature events. And signature events are defined by city-managed special events, co-organized events where we play a role on the, the planning, the planning table for these events. Facility use permits, those are those smaller events under a hundred. Things like the museum history talks, the Legion has a Veterans Day ceremony that they do that has a handful of folks that attend. These smaller scale events would continue. And then any sort of longstanding community event that serve a broad demographic. And when narrowed down, those signature events include Tuesdays in the Plaza, the Fourth of July Parade and Duck Dash, Dia de los Muertos, City Mary Hillsburg, and then any unanticipated event, I think like the Welcome, Welcome Home Hillsburg event that we had after the Kincaid fires. Those events, more likely city managed, but they may, may not be. Those that might have a, a, kind of a significance that we'd want to pay observance to. Next slide. And then the Parks and Rec Commission reviewed Phase One of the plan in October here, and the commission voted to recommend the City Council approve the Operational Plan with two modifications. Firstly, was the commission recommended that the Hillsburg Jazz Festival's Juneteenth Celebration be designated as a signature event for 2026 and remain in the Plaza. And then this would be a one-year designation. Jazz requires significant planning time to hold their events. They've actually done quite a significant amount of planning. It is a full-day event. And with the conflict with the Farmers Market that would be happening in the Foley Pavilion on that Saturday, that would be problematic for them to find a new site at this stage. And so, but Jazz Festival does intend in 2027 to move that event to a Sunday and host at the Foley Pavilion. Next slide. And then, secondly, the staff, sorry, the commission recommends that staff evaluate the feasibility of introducing non-City Partnered and private events in the pavilion prior to the start of the next budget cycle. Under the current plan, staff would prepare Phase Two of the Operational Plan, which would include non-City Partnered and private events as part of that next budget cycle, with implementation anticipated in, on July one. However, recognizing that, you know, we have growing community interest in the pavilion, and there is demand certainly, Parks and Rec Commission does recommend that City Council direct staff to explore funding options within our current budget cycle to maximize the space sooner. So with that, next slide, recommendations before you there. Anna Grant and I are here, thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate that report. Do we have questions from council?
Yeah, just want to, will the, the music permit from the plaza transfer over to the transfer over to the Foley Pavilion? So in other words, if somebody wants to play music, do they still need to get that 24 hour permit for the pavilion?
Oh, the special performance permit. Right, right now, the special performance permit is strictly for use of permit in the Hillsburg Plaza. But if council desired, it could certainly be used in the Foley Pavilion.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Following that, yeah, that's a natural, I think. Hopefully, hopefully, we can work that in at some point. Since it's just sort of a staged space there, it might be nice, nice to utilize it. Is there a PA system built into the facility for announcements? I assume it's not like a music band sort of PA system, but just something to make an announcement to attendees?
Yeah, there's a pretty sophisticated PA system that's installed throughout the facility. And not only the facility, but also reaches in the parking lot as well. Has some configurations to it to allow for sound in certain areas and pockets and that kind of thing. But it's not professional, it's not a substitute for professional audio. So if somebody wanted to bring in a band that had a professional sound and that kind of thing, they would need to bring in a audio tech in order to support that.
Yeah, even still though, I think that's going to be really a huge benefit to this facility over the Plaza. I mean, there's been so many cases where people wanted to make an announcement to attendees, and that's just going to really embellish a lot of events. So that's, that's great. I didn't see in mention of the Hillsburg Wine and Food Festival. If they are, I mean, that's, I guess that's under the non-city partner events, but it seems like a natural for this, for this venue.
Yeah, so they currently are operating under a three year agreement with the city for use of the West Plaza parking lot. And as of right now, certainly intend to continue to utilize the parking lot for that event. We have had conversations with them and they have seen the site a little bit for earlier on in the construction development, but I think they are trying to figure out ways that they can utilize it. Certainly, the Farmers Market being on Saturdays is problematic for that particular event because they have, do quite have an extensive setup on that Saturday. However, they are exploring potentially doing future events there once private events allow on Sunday, perhaps for like a satellite program like they do with some of the other facilities in town. It is being considered, but not necessarily for the grand tasting at this point, as far as my, my knowledge goes.
Okay. The Farmers Market has this ramp thing for the pumpkin and zucchini festival. And right now it's in a storage unit where it used to be in the old cherry building across the street. Is there any possibility of a storage space for that thing that's right there?
What I can say is the Farmers Market will have dedicated storage in the pavilion. I think certainly our, our thought was that it would be more intended for the, to meet the day to day needs of the weekly Saturday, Tuesday. It will be limited for them, so, but also I come with the impression of however they intend to use their allotted storage space to meet their needs, is they can certainly do that. Whether or not it'll fit the zucchini ramp, I couldn't tell you off, off, off the top of my head right now, but there will be storage space for the.
Cross that bridge when we come to it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Have we looked at some of the events that are not currently on the Plaza, but that might, I mean, these, the Plaza and the Foley Pavilion are physically very different. And I'm wondering if we've evaluated events that utilize other city spaces like the Bloodroot Ramble Music Festival at the Community Center. You know, obviously a different footprint than the sports fields there. But have we looked at some of those other events to see if it would make sense to move them to the Foley Pavilion? I was also thinking about some of the like running or cycling events that sometimes block streets or, you know, if, if you have an event that could start in the parking lot and depart from there, then, you know, you're, you've got like a natural place, like, you know, Turkey Trot, for example. I know there's a big tradition of blocking off intersection, but you've got a raised level area where you could have, say, a DJ performing and people coming to get their numbers, and even a place for people to like park and congregate. Have we looked at those events?
Yeah, you know, I, I look at it from the perspective of we're not necessarily looking to move people over to the Foley Pavilion. It's more so that we're encouraging people to look at the possibilities that the Pavilion has for their event. You know, it's difficult because like you mentioned, it's a very different space and feel than it is in the Plaza or other locations. To the case of Bloodroot, we looked at a lot of different locations, City Hall Parking Lot, West Plaza Parking Lot, a street, those kinds of things. And they wanted for, to meet their event objectives, you know, the grass space. They wanted, they wanted the comfortable feel like you were in a very small, you know, you know, intimate festival setting. That was, and so doing things on hardscape was not necessarily going to meet those objectives. However, I will say that we've had conversations with a lot of the event organizers. Certainly like Corazon hosts the Dia del Nino event, which is a kids fun run and carnival at the Community Center. That's a conversation that I brought up with the Marci Flores, which was, hey, have you thought about hosting that at the Pavilion? And then accessing the Falls Creek Pathway, which is right there as part of the fun run, just like you would at the Community Center, and looking at utilizing that space. So we do it more from the encouraging and kind of making people aware that their, their event, which they host elsewhere, could potentially be utilized at the Foley Pavilion. But there are certain events like Turkey Trot that we looked at where, hey, that would kind of make sense. It's a, Turkey Trot is a pretty sizable event, particularly at the beginning when folks are lining up. But there's also challenges with that, with crossing a major thoroughfare on Hillsburg Avenue. The race thins out over time, so it's not going to be able to end there without impacting traffic and those kinds of things. So there are some limitations when it comes to those really big races and that kind of thing. But, but certainly with all events, it's more of the encouraging and letting people know that that's a space that they can potentially utilize, so.
And then I was wondering, I know you mentioned, Anna, that we are not going to have the restroom facilities open during non-event days, which makes total sense. I'm wondering, I think we have other restrooms open here at City Hall. So would it be possible, at least in the beginning phases, to post something, you know, that looks nice but isn't a permanent placard to let folks know that if they're informally using the facility, like we hope that they do, say, an impromptu yoga class or meetup to go cycling, that people know that these bathrooms are open? So it's easy to get to and people are aware of it? Could we post that kind of signage?
I think it's something we can consider. I mean, there's not just the restrooms that we have here at City Hall. We also have the restrooms at Hotel Hillsburg, just to encourage people that there are public restrooms very nearby. Yeah. Swenson Building.
Great, thank you. Oh, and then I, sorry, I had one more quick question. Have we looked into the idea of like, or when would be the appropriate time to talk about additional programming? So one of the things I heard from the community was like folks wanting to have like a food truck park night with live music, where it wouldn't be like having a permanent food truck park, but that we would do it like on Wednesday nights in the summer or a night when there isn't already Tuesdays in the Plaza happening or something, that we could have food trucks come and people could come and casually eat and have a low cost food option and have live music or activities or something. Is that something that we've considered? Or how would we go about having that conversation?
Yeah, I, I love that idea because that's something we've long talked about for many years. It would boils down is, is the capacity, really. Right now, there's no plans for city hosted special events in the Foley Pavilion. And again, we have to look at what the operational plan and not operational, but the operational funding will allow once we get to that point. And to see what, you know, what's available and then what's the capacity. All great ideas. And if there's organizations out there, nonprofits that want to, you know, initiate something like that, we'll happily work with them.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think it's going to be difficult when we have this beautiful new shiny object that we want to program and really try to get a lot of use out of and not, you know, pushing you guys to your capacity limit around the number of events. I mean, we're already doing so many events in the community, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we don't have any further questions, I'll open this up to public comment. Anybody like to comment on this item, please come forward. Welcome.
I'm sitting too long. Good afternoon, Mayor Mitchell and city council members. My name is Kathy Birdsong, and I'm here to represent Hillsburg Center for the Arts and our request for your approval to hold our 13th Hillsburg Arts Festival on the Plaza. I hope you all received the email that I sent that had additional photographs on it. I wanted to give you an idea of what it looks like and how successful it is. We've enjoyed 12 successful years on the Plaza and have provided a festival colorful attraction for hundreds of local and visitors crowds. As visitors stroll through the pathways, we offer entertainment and music, wine and food. And we've had up to 56 booths offering paintings, jewelry, ceramics, fiber arts, hats, glasses, photography, the list goes on. We also have regularly included Hillsburg nonprofits like Corazon, the Hillsburg Historical Society, the Library, and Your River Downtown. Over the past two years, we've also collaborated with the Ravens International Short Film Festival. One of the most valuable qualities of the Plaza for our artists and craftspeople is the natural light. It's so important and it's essential for seeing the true colors of arts and crafts to be appreciated. This is a real positive that the Foley Pavilion does not include. Hillsburg Center for the Arts has been an anchor for the arts here in Hillsburg for years. And we're grateful that our festival is considered a signature event and in partnership with the city. And we'd like to be able to be included on the Plaza for this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Shaila Jankar. I run Noble Goat Farm, and I'm the board chair of the Hillsburg Farmers Market. And first of all, I just want to thank you so much for the opportunity to review this operating plan for the new Foley Family Community Pavilion, the home of the Hillsburg Farmers Market. We're really grateful for the thoughtful work that's gone into this proposal, and we're excited to see the next chapter of our market take shape in this purpose-built community pavilion. The Hillsburg Farmers Market was one of the first original certified farmers markets in all of California. And I really believe when we move into this new space, we can take it to the next transformational era. The community pavilion would not be possible without the generous investment by the Foley Family, nor the considerable time and resources provided by the city. And we are really grateful for both of those contributions. As we look ahead to this transition, our first focus is on ensuring the market successfully activates this new community pavilion for our farmers, for our vendors, our customers, and obviously the broader community. And we're deeply connected to making this move, or deeply committed to making this move successful. And we also want to be really thoughtful about the timing. So while we're really excited about bringing vibrant Saturday market to the new pavilion, it's kind of a quick move across the street. We would love to welcome the opportunity to explore delaying the relocation of our Tuesday market for one year. This delay would allow us to build awareness, momentum, and community habituation in the new space. Today, our quaint Tuesday market on the Plaza provides valuable service to the community, but draws significantly less foot traffic than our Saturday market, even with its central location. Moving the market to the pavilion would be a significant disruption and poses a risk of negatively impacting our customer attendance, as well as the financial viability of the Tuesday market. We believe that a phased approach would give us the best chance for long-term success, and we realize that this is a big ask. And so if an extension is not feasible, we would love to work with the city on making sure that we're supporting this transition. We already have some ideas, including signage or marketing, creating programming to pull people over. And we really look forward to figuring out a way to keep the Tuesday market viable and meaningful for our community. Now, I understand that with this move, we're going to have a chance to update our operating agreement with the city. We're very excited about that. And through this process, we'd like to reserve the flexibility to allow for future schedule changes. So something like making our Saturday market go full year or potentially moving the timing of our midweek market to make it more successful. And as we get closer to the official opening, we're excited about doing a dry run to identify any last minute logistical things that we might need to make changes to, to make sure this transition runs really smoothly. And that might result in some minor changes to the operating plan, but we just welcome the flexibility to work with you guys on that. Now, beyond the logistics of the market itself, we're really excited about the role that we can play in helping activate this new space and the entire nomad district surrounding the new pavilion. We'd love to see that West Plaza walkway transformed into a welcoming pedestrian connection between the Plaza, the Plaza and the new pavilion before the market opening in April. This space would really serve as kind of both a physical connection between the heart of Hillsburg, the really historical part of Hillsburg, and this new community gathering space. And I think it would be a meaningful investment for everyone that is part of that nomad community space. Overall, we're really excited and enthusiastic about the city's vision, and we look forward to working with you guys to making this space successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Tormaniskus in my left knee. Thank you, Mayor Mitchell and city council. My name is Gayle Okamura Sullivan, and I'm the executive director of Hillsburg Jazz. I'm also the co-owner of Dry Creek Peach, so excited about the Farmers Market use. But I'm here to represent the Hillsburg Jazz organization and to express our gratitude and interest in the Foley Family Community Pavilion. I had the opportunity to attend the walkthrough last month as well as, which, and I thought it was absolutely beautiful with all of the lights. It was, it feels so much different when you are in it versus on the street side. So I encourage people to go and walk through the space when they can. And I also attended the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. Anyway, I thought it might be helpful to share some of our thoughts and ideas for use in the coming year and beyond. So Hillsburg Jazz enters its 28th year this coming year, and the summer festival is scheduled for June 12th to the 21st, 2026. It's a 10 day festival. About 10,000 people participate in this event, and that's what we anticipate. For the past three years, we have held our, we have opened the full day of the festival with a Juneteenth Celebration on the Plaza. And as Matt presented, we planned this festival a few years out. We did our booking for the festival in 2024. Right now, we're booking our festival for 2027. So for this reason, given the history as well as our timetable, we are asking to continue the use of the Plaza for our opening Juneteenth Celebration. And given that it's the conflict too with the Farmers Market on the Saturday. So that would be for Saturday, June 13th, 2026, with the plan to move our Juneteenth Celebration to Sunday, which will actually be June 13th, because we're starting to book it now, in 2027. So that's one thing. The other use that we're interested in is typically in April or May, we hold our annual fundraising event in advance of our June festival. So we were interested in holding a fundraising event in the Pavilion to benefit our educational programming as well as our festival. It is typically between 100 to 200 people. And we would like to publicly thank and acknowledge Courtney Foley for the contributions to the community with the Pavilion. And she's also a supporter of Hillsburg Jazz. The other request we have is during the festival, we present our educational programming, and that includes the Hillsburg Jazz Collective as well as our Freedom Jazz Choir. So on that opening weekend, we are interested in using the Pavilion for a concert, a matinee concert during the festival. And that would be on Sunday, June 14th. Anyway, I hope you will consider these items, and we really are looking forward to utilizing that space. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Will Rosenzweig. I've been working and living in Hillsburg since 1997. Was actually involved as the first sponsor of the Hillsburg Jazz Festival when I was the CEO of Belvedere Winery many years ago. I'm really delighted that we're going to have such a beautiful community facility here and especially thrilled about the possibilities of having our Farmers Market have a home. It's really, to me, the heartbeat of our community and really representing. It's really, to me, the heartbeat of our community and really representative of, I think, the way communities can move into health, wellness, and sustainable kind of relationship with the climate. One thing that struck me the other day was just the signage on the building, and I was curious about that, like how that came about and how it was designed. It struck me, just as somebody that's very sensitive to aesthetics, that the way the naming and was conveyed was just sort of inconsistent with it being a community pavilion. And with all gratitude to the Foley family for their, you know, enormous generosity to get it going, I think, I think about all the tourists that come into the town and are just met here for the first time. I'm not sure, just in my opinion, that that expresses the intent of having a community facility. So I, I didn't know if that signage fits our code or our approaches or where the design and aesthetic judgment came from. It's just a question I have and something that I've also shared with other members of the community who are kind of wondering, how did that end up looking kind of so corporate or, or so, so large, really? That's my comment. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Weiss. I'm the CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs. First, I want to say thank you to the city staff for helping us get through the permit process. We next week will start tearing down the almost 80-year-old Boys and Girls Club to start building a new one. We're very excited, especially want to thank the city manager for all of the mentorship during that process, very patient with me, and I appreciate you. What I wanted to talk about tonight is Boys and Girls Clubs has served tens of thousands of youth in Heelsburg for almost 80 years, and we're excited about this new facility to serve tens of thousands and more in the next 80 years. And as you may know, we host a fundraising event on the plaza once a year in October. That event has raised over $2.5 million that have directly benefited the young people of Heelsburg who don't pay any fees or dues to attend the Boys and Girls Club every day. I understand that the intention would be to potentially eliminate having any private events on the plaza, and I'm just here to ask you on behalf of the kids and our organization to consider grandfathering Boys and Girls Clubs into the new plans. We're excited about the Foley Pavilion and hope to use it extensively, but we already know that our event won't fit in that space. We have 65 Heelsburg-based wineries that participate in the event, about 700 people, including from 48 states this past year. So it's very important to the young people of the community. We've looked extensively for another location, and if we are unable to have it on the plaza, we think we'll be unable to stay in Heelsburg, and I think that would be heartbreaking for the community and certainly for the kids we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Mark McMullin, I live in Parkland Farms. First of all, I just wanted to say thanks. The community pavilion is great. I've done the tour through there and really looking forward to it. The museum, I'm on the museum board, and we're looking, looking at doing events there in 27 because we've kind of closed out for '26. I want to say that I'm very much in support of trying to maintain the kind of signature events that are already on the plaza. Trying to move them to Foley can dramatically change the way that they, that they are seen and attended in the, in the community. The Heelsburg Art Festival is a great example. That's just a perfect fit for the, for the, for the plaza. It's very community-oriented. And also, the farmer's market on Tuesdays in the plaza during the summer, I think is a, makes a really important sort of community sort of feel for the plaza during the summer, to have the farmer's market there in the morning, and then you have the people that are, that are there in the afternoon getting ready for the, for the evening concert. I think it just creates this incredibly sort of synergy that is just so unique to Heelsburg, and I think that it would be really a shame to not have that to. We've seen what happens when the, the farmer's market was in the parking lot where the Siri Building was, when they decided to move there years ago. And I just think that having the plaza energized on those Tuesdays is a really important thing. So I think that keeping them there all through the year would be great, but certainly making sure that they're there during the summer is very important. And then I just had one last question. We have cameras at the Foley Pavilion. I'm wondering who is monitoring those? And I'm wondering how long the video is being kept? Do we have cameras in other parks? And if we do, who monitors those and how long is that video kept? So anyway, just questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seen anyone come forward. I'll bring it back to council for further questions and/or comments. Ron? No? Yeah, okay. I think it's his first meeting. All right. So there were, so there are several questions about events that people want to have stay in the plaza, and I wanted to find out kind of how we want to approach that. Plus, there was the question about the sign and how did that come to be? And then also the cameras, if you could help with those.
Yeah, sure thing. So you'll have to remind me, the sign, camera, events. Um, yeah, so there's definitely a recommendation on the table in terms of the criteria for signature events. I think from my perspective, it's, you know, receiving the permit applications, and we're going to need to determine, you know, what those events are that can be approved to be on the plaza. And from my perspective, is being as specific as possible as to what those events are. Certainly, that's something could be done during the, when city council reviews the master calendar of events as a way to identify, okay, these are the events for the next year, you know, that we like to maintain on the plaza. I think kind of our criteria is just kind of a method to get that conversation started, and certainly, no doubt, anticipated that the plaza is a, is a great location for events, and certainly event organizers wish to keep their events on the plaza. But then again, we have a Foley Pavilion that is, we put a lot of investment into, and so what does that relationship between events, the plaza, and Foley Pavilion look like? So that's what we look to council to help us in providing us direction on what, what you'd like to see. So in terms of the sign, if Director Thieming's here, he can really speak to this a lot better because he knows more the historical background of, and the significance of the sign.
Let me answer your first question first. So there, with new things come uncertainty, and I recall when the market wanted to relocate to the plaza on Tuesdays, there were numerous meetings with the market manager about that relocation, meeting onsite, how does it work, what streets do you close down? And eventually, we worked out a good system collaboratively that worked. And so I think there's a concern from event organizers about how does this work? And it's hard to tell right now when essentially you have a half-done building, wow, let's say 70% done project. I think once it starts to take shape, it will look better. There's potential opportunity for council maybe to do a couple pilot programs at the Foley Pavilion before it becomes full, completely operational with private events. That might be something, and council could consider extending for one more season a few of these events that have requested to remain at the plaza. It is challenging to keep events at the plaza. The impact of Dia de Muertos this weekend was significant, or two weekends ago, on the turf. The ongoing impact from the market on Tuesdays does have an impact on the turf, the road closures, and so there's just factors that go into that. We're not asking for a decision tonight. If you'd like us to go back and talk to those event managers some more, when we come back and bring the actual plan for Phase 1, we're more than happy to do that. So kick the can down the road a little bit, give us some thoughts. Do you want to keep doing events at the plaza, or you want us to move ahead with this new facility? As far as the, the actual signage, I know this is a topic in, in town. So replicating the size, style, and design of the historic buildings sign from the earliest known photograph, which was around 1955, when it was called Rosenberg Brothers Company, it was part of the cultural resources and historic rehabilitation requirements. Because this building is historically significant, there were certain things that we had to do under the Department of Interior's requirements to retain and reflect that historic element. One of those was the sign. So if you go on the city's website in the historic section, you'll see a photograph that is the oldest picture we have that shows what that sign looked like. And part of the requirement was we had to replicate that. That's also why the facade looks like it does, and that's why there are cornices on the top of the facade. We, that was a requirement. Two other major requirements, one was retaining the trust system, which posed out to be, posed a significant challenge. And the third was that we had to replicate a loading dock because that was a warehouse of produce and other things. And so there is, when, when the building opens, you'll see there's interpretive signage that talks about the warehouse piece of it. I think there's an impression out there that the Foleys dictated that facade, and they did not. And I think gratitude for them is important, not criticism. So that's my second comment. And the third question was cameras. So the camera system is going to be managed by the city's IT department. I honestly don't know what their retention, retention schedule is, and I'll defer to the city manager's office.
I was going to look up the retention schedule when my laptop died after our long meeting, but I'll, so I won't give you a number of days, but I will build upon what Director Thieming just said. We actually have two, probably more, but two relevant sets of cameras. One is public safety cameras that we have in a number of locations that this council worked with the police department on a couple of years ago in terms of where we have hotspots of criminal activity, and that came with a retention schedule. I, sorry, 90, I was about to say 60, so thank you. So 90, it sounds like 90 days. I will double-check that and we'll get you all the policy. But it's a relatively short retention schedule with some pretty tight controls on who can access that footage and when, and there needs to be a legitimate law enforcement purpose. These are a little bit different. We also have facility cameras at a number of our city facilities, and this falls into that category. I think we're on the same retention schedule, but we'll check that for you. But these operate a little bit differently in that we use them for safety of city operations and city staff, and they've existed longer, so they're not tied to the police department, but rather link back to our IT department and really only, the footage is only pulled when there's a, something happens and there's a requirement to check it. So we will get you a precise answer and happy for the quester as well to send that over, but I hope that helps at least a little bit.
Thank you. I think that's it. Councilmember Hengley had a question.
Actually, I didn't have a question. I was going to make some comments. I want to take a moment here to kind of reflect, sitting here, I think you were on this dais with me when we had a number of meetings, and Mark, you, you recall how, I mean, it was contentious because there was a bunch of people here that were determined that that site needed to be affordable housing. Then we had, the last second, the Foley family came in with their very generous offer, and I remember saying, it's, we need to explore that option because the affordable housing was not a given. They still had to go through all the approval process and everything like that, so let's see what we could do. And I firmly believed that we could do both. We could do, we had a lot of housing potentially in the pipeline, which we're all, we've all seen, ribbon cuttings, everything like that. And we have this Foley Family Pavilion that wouldn't have happened without the Foley family, Mark, our city staff's work, everything that, you know, the community did to make sure that that happened, that it was more than just a sign that sat there saying, future home of the farmer's market. I mean, the future's getting pretty close, so that's pretty exciting. A couple other things that I remember when we were discussing this was, and Mark kind of mentioned, the toll that the events were taking on the plaza. There were a lot of events that were happening, and it was destroying the plaza. And, you know, right now, you go up there and you see all the, the chain, they're not chains, they're plastic rows, to try to revitalize the sod and different things like that. So the intention and the conversation that happened at that time was to start moving things off of the plaza. And, you know, the other thing that I think kind of gets lost is, you know, we're forgetting that true west is opening. You know, we've, we've got activated space with Little Saint. There's a lot that's been going on since we had this discussion that's not just the Foley Family Pavilion. And, you know, the comment, Shaila, I think you talked about the, the walkway. We literally talked about it at that meeting about how do you activate, we're, we're talking about lights and how do you draw people from the plaza down here because it was kind of, you know, it's, it was hard to envision back then because everybody's drawn right to the plaza. But now we have things that are starting to pull, you know, expand that walkability in the downtown that we have. Nomad's a perfect example. It's another thing that, you know, we're, we're making efforts to kind of expand so everything's not just right there on the plaza. And so I, I absolutely support relocating the events to the Foley Family Pavilion. I think the, the arts festival, farmer's market, I, you know, I completely agree, whatever we can do to help make sure that people know that the Tuesday market is here, I think that's important. We need to make sure that the events that are relocated to the Foley Family Pavilion are successful, and I think, you know, there, there's an opportunity to reimagine some of these events and the opportunities that, that, it may not be the same event on the plaza, but it could be maybe even better with all the amenities that are available at the Foley Family Pavilion. And I think the other thing that's kind of not really being talked about is, you know, I, I talked about, I mentioned housing and the event center. You're also getting, you know, when the Heelsburg Food and Wine is doing their event in the, in the parking lot back here, the Heelsburg Plaza is peaceful, you can go down there, and if you're not part of that event, you still get to enjoy the plaza. And I think that's the opportunity that we're going to see here is we can have very successful, great events at the Foley Family Pavilion and have our plaza that the community can enjoy if, you know, they're not going to every single event. So for me, I'm really excited about where we're going with this. I'm comfortable with the signature events that are listed here. I'm not really interested in expanding that beyond what's listed here. I support the, the Jazz Festival being grandfathered for 20, for next year. I appreciate how you kind of thought through that process and really understanding that the goal is to, to get the event here. I like the idea of some, not draft events, what'd you call them, the, the practice ones? Pilots. It's not really 9:45, it's like 10:45, right? Yeah, but I do feel like, you know, I, I'm excited for the opportunity, like, you know, school fundraisers, you know, the, the different things that the, the local schools, crab feeds, I, you know, I think that there's a lot of opportunities to activate the Foley Family Pavilion, and I'm looking forward to the discussion of some of the private events that, you know, once we kind of get the city-focused, community-focused ones that, you know, I mean, if there's an opportunity to do some, some private events that can help fund all the community events, I'm all for that. So I think those are my, my thoughts. I'm really excited about this. I really think, I, I'm not really interested in expanding the number of signature events. And let's see, what else? Yeah. Okay, I, I think those are my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Edwards, and then Chris, and then Ari.
I think that, you know, it's new. It's something new, and what we're not doing is looking at the possibilities with that catering kitchen, scullery is what I'd call it. But anyway, it allows events to do different things, to reimagine some of the events, and, you know, whether it's hot, it'll, it'll have the shade, won't really depend on weather when they're
Won't really depend on weather when these tricky months. And I think it'll just expand opportunities for people to have more events, utilizing it more year round than the plaza. And we have to be careful. We don't want to love it to death. I think we had a discussion of that a while ago about, you know, the lawn and, and with the orange barricade around it right now, that you can only have so much traffic on turf. And we need to be aware of that because we don't want, we want to keep the plaza looking good. We don't want it to look like plotted turf and dead grass. So I think that we need to balance it out. And it will take a while. I think that it's nice to hear the Jazz Festival looking at moving and we, we slowly move things over. I think it'll be very beneficial. And, and as people get there, they can reimagine events and even create new events at that location. And parking right across the street and at the facility itself. I think it'll be a really, will people go like, oh, well, do I, if I'm going to the plaza, where am I going to park? Is it going to be a long walk? And so I think that having that parking right adjacent to it will be very advantageous to events.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'll follow the theme of, uh, supporting, um, the move of more and more events to, to the pavilion. And, um, you know, I want to emphasize that I, I'd like to do that because I think it's really going to help these events to, to thrive. And right now, you know, I get the nostalgia of being on the plaza. There's, you know, a certain affinity and, and sense that that's like the, you know, the, the core of Heelsburg. And of course, it kind of always will be. But, but I think our, we have, we have a growing appreciation of Heelsburg being not that one block, right? And this, uh, to add to, uh, Heltman Hagley's list, the train station does that on the south side. So, and, uh, you know, there's this nomad movement on the north side and there's the, the, this, this perfect pathway that heads over to Little Saint and the pavilion. And the whole thing just expands, but only by one block. It's really not that huge. And we're, you know, it's, 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 um, I think it's going to take just a little time to get used to Heelsburg, uh, under that lens that, um, that we, that we've, 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 uh, you know, expanded one block out with really great stuff. And, um, but, you know, there's so many great amenities at the, at the pavilion that, um, I think, I think once people are there and once this kind of lived in and grown in a little bit, that people are going to really appreciate the fact that we have this incredible resource to, to support, um, events of all types. And, um, so I, I want to acknowledge that there's a theme of flexibility and gradualism here, you know, and how we're going to do things. I, I would like that too. I mean, obviously it's going to take some time for people to get used to the idea. And some, um, uh, you know, people want to take steps to make sure that, that transition is, is smooth and people get the message and so on. So that's, that's all good. And we, we respect that, you know, that there may be some anxiety, but I think we can be confident that, that as we move things along with a little nudge, that everyone's going to be happy in the end. And, um, so, I mean, I think that's, I think that's especially true for the Tuesday market too. I, I know there's a lot of anxiety, but they're not going to get enough tra, foot traffic over there and the sales won't be good. But with all that parking there and all, you know, and the bathrooms right there and so on, I think that you're going to get, I think it's going to really actually embellish the event. So, um, we won't know till we see it, right? So there's some worry about that. But I think it's going to be, I think in the end, it's really going to be great to have it there, um, you know, in its, in its time. So, um, it's just want to say that I support the recommendations of the, um, of the Parks Commission. I think those are, those are solid and appreciate all their attention to this issue. And, um, uh, look forward to, uh, look forward to a ribbon cutting eventually.
Up, upcoming soon. Councilmember Kelly.
Um, I wanted to respond to the comments about the farmer's market that Shaylee mentioned. So I think what I heard, and I wanted to clarify, was that as we move forward with adopting the next, um, you know, longer term agreement with them, that they wanted some flexibility with respect to the time of day for the Tuesday operation or potentially Saturday operation. And then also, um, like the dates of when the market concludes and, um, should they want to, you know, go further into the year or start in February or whatever. So I would like to suggest that instead of having that have to come back to council and doing it in conjunction with, you know, another, um, policy that, or discussion around the master events, that we would give staff the ability to make, you know, minor modifications to the agreement with the farmer's market without the whole thing having to come back to council. Because then it can, they can negotiate it and have some assurances around what that can look like. So that would be, I, I have a second. Is there anyone else who agrees? Maybe, maybe, maybe not? No, just, oh, yeah? Yes, okay. So it looks like there could be consensus around giving staff the ability to have flexibility in that agreement, like we would set it. But then if the dates are going to change a little bit or the, um, time, say the Tuesday market, they decide they want to have more lunch options and it's not going to end at noon, it's going to end at 1:00 or whatever. They, you know, I actually remember when I used to work downtown that people would come back from the market at 12:15 with their lunch items that they grabbed from the thing. And people would be like, oh, I'm going to go grab it. And then they're like, oh, shoot, the market's already over, I missed it. So there could be a desire to want to shift that a little bit. I don't think that should have to come back to council. And so I'd love for you to have the ability to make those minor modifications. And maybe staff can determine what's considered minor versus, you know, major. But the idea of, of it ultimately, um, you know, leaving the plaza area. I'm, I'm a little bit indifferent to the Tuesday market, whether it stays on the plaza or not, only because I think it, it doesn't have as big of an impact downtown during that timeframe. But I would eventually love to see us, you know, move those operations to the Foley Pavilion and, and to have, you know, uh, giving them the time to make that transition if that's what they request. I'm open to that. I really, I think the idea of that Jazz Festival, the community events with the choir and the other thing happening on June 14th, that they've requested, I, I don't know where that event is currently taking place. It's not taking place in the plaza, but, but, uh, Gail had mentioned having that at the pavilion. And I think that type of kind of community performance that's more, you know, family oriented as opposed to some of their, some other events that exist out there that are a little bit more exclusive or ticketed in a way that doesn't feel accessible to the community. I like the idea of having those types of events, whether it's True West doing a film screening that, that would normally happen in the plaza, you know, having those events at Foley and, and similarly the youth chorus or other things to have those performances at the Foley Pavilion. So I would support having that June 14th Jazz Concert, which is not the Juneteenth, this is a separate thing, uh, concert to be, to have the ability to be at the Foley Pavilion. And I agree. I think we are, it's going to continue to come up. How do we make that, the access from the plaza through the West Plaza Park, through that, the bridged area or that, um, area behind the Swenson Building? Is that what it's called? That's really in disrepair. I feel like it's going to continue to come up where we have to figure out how we're going to clean that area up. There are elements of it that are really nice, but I think in general, as this area gets more and more foot traffic with everything that Councilmember Hagley said that's happening in and around that area, I think we're going to need to prioritize some improvements over there to make sure that, that all of these events and all of the kind of connections between the plaza and the Foley Pavilion are, feel seamless and are fully realized. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
So I want to say what a great milestone this is. I want to acknowledge that too, because this has been around and happening for, what? 20 years or something, I think? Different iterations. And so the fact that we're here now and we're looking at an operational plan is like, wow. Thank you, all of you. I mean, this is really an incredible moment. And, um, you know, yes, we got a great donation from the Foley family to kick this off, which I am grateful for. But don't forget that the city also put in, besides the blood, sweat and tears, a big amount of cash as well. So $5 million or so. So to me, that says we need to utilize the Foley Pavilion in the way it was designed and, and recognizing that, utilizing that asset as best we can. And so, yeah, I'm not a fan of having the Tuesday market stay in the plaza. I think it should be in the farmer's market pavilion, which we built specifically for that. So, you know, I would, I would have a hard time with that. But I do think, uh, thank you, Gail, for being so reasonable about, you know, your requests for the Juneteenth day. You know, it makes perfect sense. It's, and, and you know that then the next year it'll be in the Foley Family Pavilion. So I, I certainly support that. I think, you know, I, when I, I used to run all the time up Johnson Street where, you know, the old hospital used to be and then they tore it down and built all these houses. And I, I'd walk down, I'd run down there and think, God, this looks awful. This is going to be terrible, these massive houses and so on. And somebody said to me, just calm down and wait till things get planted. It's going to look really good. And lo and behold, it does, you know? I mean, it all fits in the neighborhood nicely. The houses go together, you know? So I feel that way about the Foley Family Pavilion right now. It doesn't look great, but it's going to. It's going to be beautiful. And I think people are going to want to do their events there. I think the comments that you've all made about reimagining them, yeah. That, I think that's, that's going to happen and it should happen. And, you know, with Little Saint, True West, that whole area, our, our city is going to go out from the one little block to two blocks, four blocks or whatever. Yeah, it's so big. So, um, and as far as like putting, trying to take money out of this year's budget for non-sponsored city events, I don't think that's a good plan right now. I think we need to walk before we can run. And we need to know, you know, kind of what these events are going to take. You don't know yet, you can imagine, right? What it might take staff wise and time wise, money wise. So I, I, and, and we're going to be doing, um, budgeting soon. February, March? So, I mean, we're not talking 20, you know, our 26, 28 budget is going to happen July 20, starting July 2026. So that's just around the corner. And so I think it makes sense to do this intentionally on how we're going to, you know, fund these things and staff wise and all of that. So, um, I like the, uh, the phased approach that you've, you've, um, recommended. And so I too, I guess I'm saying I agree with the staff recommendations at this point to keep the signature events the way they are, what you've recommended. And also, you know, be flexible in, in, as things come up because we know we have to be. The fact that you're going to look in at two years out now, I think that's going to create, you know, make that more reasonable and feasible. And as far as the farmer's market though, as far as being really flexible, they want to last, stay longer or do different day or whatever. I'm not sure how that was all planned. But what happens if you have an event that's scheduled right after the farmer's market's supposed to close? I mean, how, how flexible, I guess the question is, can you actually be on that?
Yeah, I can answer that question. Yeah, it's really going to depend on the event. Certainly, you know, multi-day, it would exclude some multi-day events and that kind of thing. But, um, you know, certainly a load in could occur as early as 1:00 on a Saturday, you know, while the market's packing up, um, you know, for an event that would, you know, start to occur several hours later. So it's certainly not unfeasible at all to, to do an event like that, uh, in, in that space. And so, um, there's, I think there's a lot of opportunity there for that.
Great, thank you for that. And, um, so, yeah, I, I, um, I think we've, I think Councilmember Hagley and other comment, but as far as I'm concerned, I, I like what you've, what you've put here and I'm looking forward to it and congratulations.
I just wanted to speak directly to the Boys and Girls Club, that you're a very important part of Heelsburg community. We like your event. I think going back to when we were having this initial discussion, one of the things that, you know, was the concern was having the plaza closed off, ticketed, fenced or whatever, when you have some of these wine events. And I think, you know, I would just, again, I, I think there's a real opportunity with the Foley Family Pavilion that, um, you know, working with our staff, I'm sure you could come up with a beautiful plan that'll be extremely successful. Because we do have options to be able to close the street. There's a couple of different distances that we can close to, you know, Foster Street, to the, uh, to the entrance and then, you know, kind of expansive. Our staff is very good at getting creative and I completely trust them to be able to find a way to, to make it happen. And I, I'm really, you know, looking forward to, you know, some of the things that, where we thought, oh, this is how it needs to be, that there's going to be new inspiration that's going to come from the new location. And, and I think it's going to be a good thing. So I just wanted to like leave that with you, um, uh, that, you know, you're a big part of the community and we're looking forward to continuing to work with you.
Yeah, thank you for saying that. I, I just had a, a question about the sign. I have asked about this before, but, you know, the Foley family piece of that is quite large. But my question is, there's, or my comment is that there's no way to know that this is part of the city of Heelsburg or that this building is the city of Heelsburg. Is there a way to get like our logo or something added to this? Or because it, it feels like we're sort of missing in this equation.
So the sign that you see currently on the facade is only part of the sign package. We have, um, interpretive signage that we're working on that will be displayed in two locations in the building. One towards the front that will identify the city as the owner. Um, and then also a secondary interpretive panel that's closer to the back. And then we're also working on a monument sign on the front that will identify it as the city of Heelsburg. We're kind of playing with the idea of incorporating some kind of emblem on the front facade that acknowledges home of the farmer's market and the city as well. That's a little trickier that, because we need to be careful about respecting the historic integrity of the facade that we were required to recreate and not changing that. But there may be ways for us to do that, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I knew you'd come up with something creative.
For working on it.
Appreciate it, thank you. Did you have a question, Vice Mayor? No comment?
No, I think it's great that our, the director is listening to the community and working to, to get these, to stay ahead of this. So I really appreciate that.
Okay, so if there's no further questions or comments, you have the direction that you were seeking from the council? Yes? You're good? I think we all agree pretty much with your proposed plans. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Yeah? Right. Okay, so we have one, um, one other new business item is, uh, council meetings and work session dates for 2026.
Yes. Good evening. Hopefully my presentation is short and sweet. The recommended action is to, by motion, reschedule certain regular 2026 city council meeting dates that fall on a holiday and approve the city council meeting schedule for 2026, including the anticipated work sessions and special meeting dates. Just a couple of dates I wanted to draw your attention to. We are proposing that you cancel the January 5th, 2026 city council meeting due to its proximity to the preceding holidays. And then cancelling the two council meetings in July, like we have done in the past. And the final two dates to draw your attention to is we have confirmed goal setting for Wednesday, March 25th. That should be on all of your calendars. And we are proposing to hold a budget special meeting on Monday, May 11th. And so if we could get your feedback on that date. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that short presentation. Appreciate it. Do we have council questions? Ariel?
Um, the Monday, May 11th budget meeting, is that a 6:00 PM plan? For like a normal council meeting Monday, but not a council meeting?
Yeah, we hadn't decided on the time yet, but 5:00 or 6:00 probably.
Okay, I have my S C T A meeting that day, um, that starts at 2:30. So 6:00 PM would be ideal and not 5:00. Or I can always just leave S C T A early if need be.
Okay.
So are we saying 6:00? Is that, is that, okay, is that, does that work for everybody?
Yep.
All right, wait, I have to change it in my phone here. For the budget, yeah. What's, we'll all be asleep. Um, any other comments or questions or issues about that? No, so I'll open this up to public comment. And since there's nobody in the room, I don't think there is any. I'll bring it back.
Move to approve.
So we, uh, motion, we need a motion.
I move we approve, like calendar is presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Edward.
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley.
Yes.
Councilmember Kelly.
Um, I just had a question.
I just had a question. So it's okay. I just, there's a meeting date that I know I can't attend and I'll just put that out there as opposed to requesting to reschedule.
Vice Mayor Harrod.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So now we go on to the council reports on matters of interest occurring since previous regular meeting. Who wants to start us off? Vice Mayor?
Okay. I guess, in no particular order, Dia de Muertos was awesome, super soggy in the beginning, got wet, went home, came back when it was dry and everybody could come out finally and it was full blast and it was, it was excellent. But it was a, it's kind of a rough start, but it was, but a great, great event. So glad that it's, that it continues to happen here in Heelsburg. Attended the True West opening, also a great celebration. Haven't seen movie there yet, but it was really great to be inside and to acknowledge all the people who put so much effort and, and money and time to make that happen. It's really going to be transformative for Heelsburg. I did attend a Zoom meeting for the, for the ABAD group. And just to get an overview of, of their, I forget the exact term, it's like a general plan for the whole Bay Area transit and other considerations, housing, 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 housing was on the menu as usual. A lot of the themes that we're, we're working on in Heelsburg, you know, in terms of bike, pedestrian and alternative transportation was at the forefront. So that's it in a very small nutshell. The mayor's and council members' meeting had a presentation on Measure O that was very informative. It was great to do a deep dive on that. Probably my, the biggest, quickest takeaway is that there's a lot of great work being done for mental health throughout the county. But in almost every case, the funding is erratic, not sustainable, challenging again and again and again. Even with Measure O in place, that seems to be the overarching theme. So maybe that's just something we can look at as we move into the future. I attended a commission meeting, the NCPA with Councilmember Higley. We went to Roseville and went to that meeting. And, and we did the Pumpkin Fest in beautiful weather. It got postponed a week, so slightly less attendance, but it was still super fun. And that's all I got.
Wrong?
Yeah, Dia de Muertos was a little wet, but it was nice. Well, on that, I also attended at Sonoma State, the State of the Economy. And again, the issue that really is, is holding us back is that middle-income housing comes up again and again, even though that we have some of the lowest medium-income prices as far as a county goes to the Bay Area, we still have that missing middle housing. And that's going to be something that we're continually going to be struggling with.
Councilmember Higley?
Chris already mentioned, we went to NCPA's, I had an executive and a commission meeting in Roseville. And then just wanted to note that on Thursday, next Thursday, the 13th, Assemblymember Chris Rogers is hosting the Select Committee on Climate Innovation here in the council chambers at, what time?
1:00 PM.
Oh, okay. 1:00 PM. I'll have to put that in my calendar. I thought it was in the evening. But at 1:00 PM. And that's it for my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I just had two quick ones. The first was Holly Hood's request earlier in the meeting about the proclamation for Smith Robinson Day. Mayor Mitchell, is that a proclamation that you are able to approve? And I don't know if it would even need to come back to us, because I know we can do, you can do proclamations and present it to them in and around the 8th, so we don't miss the day?
Yes. Yes, that's being done.
Great. Thank you so much. And then my other question, this is a potential agenda item, but hopefully a very small, short discussion about it. So there are a number of kind of changes afoot and opportunities right now with respect to the, an electric shuttle or a shuttle, it doesn't have to be electric, in and around Heelsburg. You may remember when Saggio Hills Housing Development, the affordable housing site, got their approval. They got some funding for a Sonoma County Transit Bus Improvement. They also have funding for a van share program as part of that housing fund. There is an opportunity to potentially pilot a program through the Sonoma County Transportation Authority with some opportunities that they're looking at that other cities have done. Both Montage Hotel and Appalachian Hotel have said they're interested in pursuing a shuttle option. Hotel Trio already has a shuttle. So lots of shuttling conversations happening and there's some funding that's out there that we could go after. So my question is, is how do you all feel about forming a subcommittee of two council members and having a future agenda item to form such a subcommittee so that the council can weigh in and potentially be a part of trying to shepherd this opportunity? I think right now the Appalachian site has not, the Burbank Housing Development at Appalachian is not done, but when it is, they're already having parking problems on that site. So I imagine it's going to be really apparent that we have some challenges ahead of us and they're looking for a shuttle option that could potentially incorporate all of the things on that site. So I'm wondering if we could have that future agenda item to discuss.
So, yeah, we shouldn't be just going into too much detail on that with the question. But so you want to agendize talking about a subcommittee to, to go for that money? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, to, to have basically two, so, and we've already adopted it as a climate mobilization strategy goal for the city to pursue this type of shuttle opportunity. But right now, there's just a lot of disparate actors and not a lot of herding of the cats. So my question is, is could we create, could we have an agenda item where we discuss the creation of a subcommittee of two council members to proceed with trying to shepherd some of those things in partnership with city staff?
I'm, I'm up for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we can get that somewhere on the agenda at some point?
Yeah, I guess if I could, I'll just ask for, it sounds like a relatively short item, but is there any specific direction as to when the council would like to see that come back?
That, that was my question. Is there like a timing constraint that we're under?
As soon as feasible. Let's put it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be quick. Mayor's and council members' meeting. I gave a presentation to the second and third graders at the Heelsburg Elementary School, which is just right up my alley, right? And thank you, Raina, for helping me with that a lot. It was great. The kids. No, no, yeah. Maria Hadley. The kids were amazing. They were so sweet and cute and they gave me hugs and, you know, yeah, it was really sweet. I got to do the welcome remarks at the ribbon cutting at True West and Vice Mayor Harrod was there. And Dia de Muertos remarks, nobody was there except the three of us and, and City Manager Kay. It was pouring down rain. It was awful at that moment. But I got to present two awards at the Sonoma County Mayor's Committee on Employment of People with Disabilities event. So that was pretty cool last week. And then Assemblymember Chris Rogers tonight. So got to make some remarks there as well at his town hall. So we're, we're working our, our relationship with him. He's working his relationship with us, which I think is really going to be great. So that's it. And with that, I'll close the meeting at 10:17.